Also?
Also, okay. The April 20th, 2021 regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education. The board is joining you via WebEx. I'm Christine Vitale, the chair, and I'm joined tonight by Ms. Guernsey, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. Gerber, and we expect Mr. Asa shortly, as well as Superintendent Cummings and the executive directors of the Fairfield Public Schools. Ask you to all please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't believe we have any call-in public comment tonight. If any of the members of the public are listening, just a reminder, you can submit public comment via the public comment email address as well as the form that is posted on the Board of Education website along with the agenda. So moving along to presentation of student achievement data. For the public, the board received this video, a video presentation. We sort of flipped the classroom a little bit. We received the video prior to spring break, which gave us time to review the data and submit some questions beforehand. Hopefully, that will make our meeting a little more efficient and allow for more time for questioning. So with that, I will hand it over to the superintendent for just some comments, and he can hand it over to his executive directors. Mr. Cummings?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vitale, and good evening, everyone. Welcome back. I hope everybody had a wonderful and restful vacation. We are going to go through our data presentation this evening. I'm going to quickly turn this over to Dr. Savicancik, who can introduce it and work with the executive, excuse me, the program directors on the presentation itself. As Ms. Vitale said, we gave the presentation out to board members in advance. We received a number of questions. We're going to do our best to answer some of those tonight. Some of that information we may need to still get to you, but we'll go through it. And then, of course, if there's any additional questions tonight, we'll go and try to answer those the best as we can as well. So, Dr. Savicancik?
Thank you, Mr. Cummings, and thank you to the board members for allowing us this time to review our student achievement data that we have over the past year or year and a half. Just for the public's understanding, much of the smarter balanced data that we generally would present was not part of this presentation. That was both viewed by the board and the public as a result of the moratorium on testing last year. Much of the data that we presented in this presentation was our universal screener, which is called STAR. We have some AP tests that you saw, as well as some other data, our UCLA screener, SRBI data, et cetera. Dr. Rasmussen, in a moment, is going to share some of the broad highlights of that presentation, as well as talk to some of the new data we were able to gather as a result of the board's questions that came in over the past few days. After that, we will open it up to questions about the presentation that might be remaining. So, Dr. Rasmussen, and thank you again for viewing the presentation prior.
Thank you, Dr. Savicancik. Again, I thank you guys, the Board of Education, for taking the time prior to watch the video or the presentation. We tried to quote-unquote "flip the classroom a bit" to kind of get this data out ahead of the time and allow for us to have a fruitful discussion around some questions that you may pose. Ultimately, on the data that was provided before our April vacation, really kind of came down to a lot of, there's a lot of consistency across the board. Really, the high school, I mean, just kind of some of the highlights of this data really illustrated, one, that the high school data was consistent to prior years. We may had some wiggles here or there, what I call that, but ultimately, it was fairly consistent. We also saw a lot of consistency in terms of the reading performance, especially through the, from our early literacy to the, into the reading up and through grade eight. But that also, and also, but we saw some differences related to math achievement, which was also very parallel to a lot of the national data. We saw, one, where the reading data was fairly stable, and we saw some slides in terms of overall performances in the math. Also, also illustrated in the data, some of the highlights, where we saw increased number of interventions. I think it really kind of illustrated how our, the system kind of responded to help support students as they were going through the different instructional models, especially related to remote, also into the hybrid and the various, at the various levels. Also, we also, the data also illustrated, I know we administered the UCLA kind of COVID screener, but also, it just kind of, it indicated an increased elevated rate of PTSD at the high school, with the middle school and elementary being fairly similar. But ultimately, that was really what was some of the big highlights. Some of the questions that we came in from the Board of Education were really related to more deeper dives into data. As we always say, we always want to keep on digging deeper, which is great to hear some of these questions asking some of, how did our subgroups perform in terms of, for example, ethnicity, gender, special education, our English language learners, et cetera. And tonight, I'll try to kind of illustrate some of the data that I was able to gather in response to some of those questions. Also, we'll also illustrate some of the participation rates related to STAR and also the, excuse me, the PSAT. And then, I know Rob will kind of talk about some of the relation to some of the questions related to the UCLA screener. But then, we'll also kind of wrap it up here then, related to some of our plans related to supporting students continuing forward. I know there was another question related to some of the transitions. Ultimately, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now to kind of really kind of go after some of the questions on how did our overall, our subgroups kind of perform. I shared this with you guys, I think it's in that spreadsheet from where you guys submitted the questions, the Board of Education. I'm going to go ahead and just display my screen now. So just give me a quick second as I get over to my screen. So here we go with, that's the agenda. Ultimately, the first question we're looking at is overall. Escape out of this. Excuse me, one second.
And for the public, just so you know, the presentation is posted with the board agenda.
So the first question related, she's looking at how our, does everyone see this table with the board members?
We can see it.
Okay. So ultimately, this illustrates some of a, this is really the growth. What do we call, in a STAR, we call it the student growth percentile, or SGP. Again, as illustrated in the presentation, what is a good kind of SGP? Usually, 50, a 50 SGP is considered a grade level growth. So we like to see grade level growths up 50 or above. Usually, the normal range is usually between 40 and 60, with high growth being above 60. But usually, we like to see SGP's above 50. So here, in this table here, as I can see over on the left-hand side, this looks at our SGP's in terms of ethnicity, in terms of are black or African-American, Asian, white, Hispanic or Latino, and how they, their growth from, say, the first, the first column is fall 2019 to fall 2020. It can really kind of illustrate, I would say, very comparable and very similar growth, kind of mirrored our growth, our overall growth that I was demonstrated in the presentation. And then, so this will kind of see how the students did coming out of the remote learning, full remote learning of last spring, and when they were assessed within the fall when they came back. Similar to here, then the second column really illustrated growth. Again, SGP 50 is, was a grade level, what we like, it kind of illustrated the kind of, again, how the students did perform, and say, in the various instructional models as they performed through the fall and into the winter. So you have the different instructional models at the elementary school and the hybrid at the middle and the high. So again, we're seeing very comparable, similar performances between overall the, for the ethnicity. Same thing, we're looking at gender. Again, we're seeing the very similar times of overall performances related to gender for reading. This one here was, actually, was a table when I was able to pull from STAR because the students had to indicate, were they taking the assessment? Are they taking it from home, or are they taking it in school? So it illustrated very similar types of growth in terms of remote assessment or in-school assessment. We actually, we actually stressed this really at the K8 level that if they're in school, actually, we actually stressed all the students had to take the assessment in the school. So any of them really though that were remote, these are the students that were at home at the time. Also, similar terms of some differences between our sped, special education, non-special education, English language learners, non-English language learners, high needs and non-high needs. Again, very similar, and then maybe some differences. Actually, we found that there's some reading up, overall performances, actually have to see as high growth when we actually come back to remote. Actually, so some students actually did well in the remote, remote land. Similar over here into the math, we actually seen very similar terms of, but the overall, again, you're seeing the growth here in the, from the fall into the fall. So coming back through the remote, or similar terms of the national data and our data overall, we saw, didn't see as high a growth as we have seen in the past. But then, when they came back into hybrid, things really bounced back in terms of their overall growth. Similar things in terms of gender, in terms of overall, in terms of growth. Similar, again, it's all staying the same story that students really through the remote and math didn't see as much growth as we typically see. And same and similar in terms of our, some of our subgroups in terms of special education, English language learners, and high needs. So ultimately, some of that really kind of highlights the same things in terms of our struggles and successes as we went through remote learning and came back into hybrid, especially at the secondary and elementary land levels. So, before I go on to this, are there any questions related to the very subgroups before I move on to participation rates?
Does any board members have any questions? And let's scroll through. Jen? Jen, go ahead.
Hi, just a quick question, Paul. If you could scroll up to the top, please. I noticed that the left-hand columns are fall to fall and the right-hand columns are fall to winter. What is the time differential between a fall and a winter?
So fall to fall, we usually take them, usually the first month or so when we get back. So that gives you some comparison, how they performed throughout the entire year. So really, for really the fall to fall was really kind of indicating how our students did coming back after the remote that we had last spring. The fall to winter, so these are students that took the test now in the fall of this current year, and then we assess them. We did this like January to early February this year. So again, it's looking at their typical growth that they, that the student should have related to that timeframe.
I understand.
So it's really indicating how the instruction is and the learning is going from when we came back into school to how they progressed coming back and then reassessing them in January.
Okay, all right. I just want to understand the time variance there. Okay, thank you. That was the only question on that. Thanks.
You're on mute, Christine.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could speak to how does this data feed into whatever the narrative is going to be regarding learning loss in Fairfield?
I think this really is one of our big data points that we're using along with a lot of the information that we get from the buildings and the teachers to better, to how to best support. I, Mr. Cummings, I don't know how much we want to, we want to talk about related to our summer plans, related to the grant, but this ultimately is, a lot of this data, along with the information from the building, is really going to help push to how to best support the needs of our learners.
Yeah, I'm going to address that more in the conversation on the ESR2 funding later on this meeting.
Okay, but obviously, we won't have this data in front of us when you say that. So I guess I'm just wondering, in terms of targeting that, and what does this, because obviously, there are a couple of numbers, you know, that go below 50 for that fall to fall, but then fall to winter. It's, they're certainly not horrible in terms of numbers, but I'm sure, you know, that might be more telling to you because you're more familiar with the STAR assessment for these, but...
I can tell you that what we did is, looking at the individual student scores, we identified an initial set of students that we were concerned about were not showing adequate growth. We then reviewed that list. We had the buildings at K8 review those, that list to see if the class performance, in-school performance mirrored the concerns that STAR was raising. You know, sometimes students don't take the test so seriously when they take it. At other times, the test may show overperformance. And so we went out to the frontline staff to identify further and get further clarification on that final list. We then used that list that was provided by the buildings to identify students, potential student participation in our summer programs.
Okay, and then, kind of the converse of that is that, you know, in some of these areas where the numbers would appear to say, we're right on track where we should be, as if it were almost a regular school year of fall 2019 to fall 2020. And clearly, that's not the case. So I'm, how do we take apart the numbers that we think aren't? Well, we, obviously, no set of numbers tells a whole, a complete story, and I know that. So what would you be using that would let you, that would guide you in terms of, we know this number looks okay, but we are looking at this, and it tells a different story?
The number, the number was really just the first, the first flush at the, at the list of students. It was then, as I said, going back to the schools to look at who was currently being identified through the SRBI processes at the schools, to see if there's correlation between the STAR scores and those lists, to see if there was other, you know, at the elementary levels by grade and at the middle schools by team. So the data here, not this data so much, but the individual student scores, was really just the beginning of the search. We did not limit ourselves to the data that was represented here because we certainly wanted to capture the teacher voice in this as well. So that's really where we are. And we will review again, I mean, you know, this, before the end of the year, we'll take another pass through that list because at that point, we'll be identifying, well, we've identified students from participation in the summer program. We'll be getting student responses back. And we're budgeting, we're building a program for X number of students. If, if we have to, if there are students who cannot take advantage of it, we're going to look to widen the net, as it were, to provide as much support as we can for students who may need it. So this is really just the first flush of the identification process.
Okay, and I'm sorry to make you jump ahead to that. I'll leave the rest of it for when we get to that agenda item. Thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Jacobson?
I'm sorry, and I'm not sure if you're actually going to go through this because I was saving some grade level questions. Are you going to actually go through the, write the presentation that we got ahead of time or not doing that? You're not doing that?
No, I'm not going to go through it. I'm really kind of really presenting the data that from your additional questions that we received.
Okay, so then, my question is, this is obviously a large picture of everyone. So I was wondering if you had seen anything at a particular grade level that, I'm assuming that within these numbers, there's a variance in there.
Yep.
Right, so.
And that's something, I mean, this is something that I just put, we would just be able to pull together, yes, but that's something that we will continue to dig into. So has there been, probably, I would say, probably, there is. There's always a little bit of a variance between the various grades. And that's something that we always kind of look at, especially when we get down to schools, looking at it, teachers looking at it, grade levels, teams looking at it. But it's something that we, this data I just put together to be able to look at more holistic. But that's, we can get you that data if you'd like.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you had already identified that yet or if that's something you're going to be working on forward. Okay, all right. Sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Pitco?
Mr. Rasmussen, I have a quick question. Are these numbers out of 100?
So this is a student growth percentile. So these numbers can range from 1 to 99. Just to think about it as like when I take a son to the doctor, they tell him his weight is at whatever the percentile is. But these are just like the average of all the percentiles of where the students are at in terms of growth. Because ultimately, it kind of breaks down and kind of looks at, well, where's the typical growth, or 50th percentile is the typical growth for a student from between assessments?
Okay, thank you.
We like 50 or higher.
Any other questions? Okay. Hold on, let me scroll. Jen, Ms. Jacobson? Okay, go ahead.
I just have a question on the SRBI page. So understood that there is, you know, more, I'm just trying to get to it in this presentation. Understood that there was more students identified this year for SRBI, which I appreciate. But I was wondering, when, in the presentation, guys, I'm talking about that where we looked, they had the, you know, meeting, exceeding, et cetera, right, for each of the grade levels, for reading and for math. So when I translate those percentages of not meeting or exceeding into actual counts, and then I look at the SRBI, I was just curious as to, you know, what qualifies to move into SRBI? Because the number of students that are not meeting or exceeding is obviously much greater than are in SRBI right now. So it's kind of like that middle question. What do you do with the ones that were on watch, basically, that were in some of this presentation, in that kind of middle group? And I'm just wondering, you know, do we need more SRBI supports for that? Or just what your thoughts are in terms of our thresholds at this point for a number of students in SRBI versus those grade level spans of not meeting or exceeding? And of course, it's the fall and the winter, so that doesn't mean spring, right? Do you still have more time? So that could be a factor in this as well. But just wondering about, Mr. Cummings, what you thought about our capacity at this point for SRBI and if that needed to be increased?
I do think our capacity for SRBI needs to be increased. Again, getting a little ahead to what we're going to talk about, not so much with the ESR2 funding, but with the American Relief Plan funding. You know, 20% of that funding is to be set aside to address what the plan calls, or what the grants call unfinished learning on students. And how we approach that is a discussion we need to have among our district administration and teacher teams. Essentially, essentially, you know, obviously, one way, the quickest way that I'll have to go is the summer program, which we're addressing with the ESR funding for the next couple of years. So what we're going to be looking at is some type of in-school tutoring-type approach, primarily because the students are there. And they're, you know, if we, my thought is that if we include that as part of the instructional day, we're going to be able to implement a much more sound program that will truly accompany, meet the needs of all the identified students.
And that would be K12?
Yes, that's how I'm looking at it.
Okay, good. And then, so Christine, I have just one more question, a little bit more about high school, if I may. The, so as everyone knows, for 2023 and beyond, you know, part of the graduation requirements are a number of different ways to meet one of the requirements. And some of that has to do with AP scores or SAT scores or PSAT scores. So when we look at the results of some of this data, which, you know, is trending kind of similar to what we've always been at, but again, it wasn't, I don't know how to put it. It wasn't as important necessarily because it wasn't part of graduation, and now it is. So if you, if you had to say to yourself, I'd like to set a goal around some of these going forward, where would we want to move that knowing that we've made this a part of graduation requirements? And that there's, you know, a third of students not on benchmark?
I'm sorry, based on the STAR assessment?
No, high school, PSAT.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, that, I think, is one of the things we, conversations we have to have at the high school level because the fundamental, one of the fundamental shifts in an SRBI approach as kids transition from, through middle school and into high school is shifting those, the support resources for many kids, not all kids, but for many kids, from basic skill development to application of those skills, right? In writing, reasoning, critical thinking, those are the types of things that we have to think about as we build. These are the challenges we faced all along as we think about an SRBI system at the high school. The opportunity here is the, and the need here is to move more quickly now to resolve that, if that makes sense. And I think, I think to some degree, what the PSAT offers is also encapsulated in the way we approach our academic expectations and the demonstration of those academic expectations against the rubrics that we've developed. So I, to my thinking, our SRBI supports at the secondary level need to move towards a more explicit approach to those outcomes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to suggest that we teach to a test by any stretch of the imagination, but knowing, knowing that these are a little bit more higher stakes at this point for our students. And, you know, it just hasn't moved the needle. And this is pre-COVID, right? So, I mean, as I said, this is, these are, these are lingering issues. So I guess as we move forward, we can put a focus on some of that, maybe in the district improvement plan and whatnot, because it's kind of an urgent matter.
Yeah, absolutely is. And I want to highlight, because one of the things that the board looked at in the adopted budget for 2021, '22 is, Mr. Cavani had put together an approach with ninth-grade students in algebra to essentially extend the instructional time. We just wanted a .2 FTE to basically double the period of support for those students. So not all interventions necessarily happen in a tutoring format. They can be in these creative ideas that we use to schedule and support students with additional instructional help during the course of the school day. And particularly, striking, you know, at this issue in ninth grade is the absolute right time to get at it. So those are the types of things we have to look at as well.
Okay, and then, I just have one last question for Paul, if that's okay, Mr. Rasmussen? It's my last question, guys, and then blah, blah. Mr. Rasmussen, I'm curious as to, I know STAR and SBACK are totally different, you know, different tests. And I'm just wondering, in your experience, and that we use STAR throughout the year and then our kids take SBACK, do you find a strong correlation, you know, close to one or not, regarding how they correlate with each other?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I've done that analysis both with the, with the SBA and with the PSAT and SAT. And there is a strong correlation, we consider, at the, in educational testing to that. Usually around, it's around a .8 correlation, which is actually very strong, very, very strong in terms of educational testing. So that's something that, it's showing you that, one, it's a valid assessment that we can use to help kind of predict and help identify where students that we want to kind of target. So it is an effective tool on that live. And it is, one, it doesn't take up a lot of instructional time out of the classroom. Some other kind of screeners I've seen that, like, I know I Ready that was used in other districts, that's an hour and a half, two-hour test three times a year. And that's something that we would like to do because we don't want to stress a lot of testing time out of the classrooms. Well, that's, that's the effective model of using the STAR is one, it's highly correlation and it's a low amount of time on the instructional time in the classroom.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know the predictive value. Thank you so much.
Any other questions before I move on? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Rasmussen, you can continue.
The other questions that we received related was to the SAT9. We actually just received this data in, I believe, yesterday. So this is, I was able to get it together very quickly. You guys see this screen in front of you now in terms of this, a quick little table?
Yep.
Okay, so again, this is showing you three years of PSAT. This is, so these students took it in March, the end of March. This is, uh, so these students took it in March, um, the end of March, on the same day that the juniors took the SAT. So again, similar performance, a little bit of a lower in terms of math, in terms of our freshmen. Um, but again, higher in terms of our English, uh, uh, and, uh, the reading and writing assessment. Uh, so that ultimately, so again, we're not seeing this big drop off like we saw in the middle school in terms of math um, and overall in terms of overall achievement. The other question that we received was, the question was, well, okay, what about participation rate? So I'm going to switch over to this screen here now. This is looking at the participation rate of, of, excuse me, this is STAR. Because one of the question, well, how many are all our students taking these assessments? Uh, because if, if not all our students are taking that, it's kind of hard to make conclusions off of that. So ultimately, you're seeing a, a high percentage of, this pretty much is in line with our past uh, percentages of students taking this assessment. Um, between fall of 2020 and this, and this year, so these really kind of shows you, reading on the left, math on the right, participation rates in terms of students taking the assessment. Um, I'm going to switch to a, for now, S A E. Again, it's comparing our ninth, tenth, and eleventh, um, over three years, uh, the participation rate for not the number of, the percent of students actually taking the assessment. What was interesting I saw was, was this, uh, the ninth graders here in this last March. Um, and I was like, well, why, why is this one so much lower than these other two? You're seeing so much lower, I think that goes a lot of, because the SAT um, has to, was, is an assessment that had to be done in school, so there was no remote option. So students that were remote, they, they either had to come in or they were, they didn't take the test that day. And I was intrigued about this eighty-seven point nine. And I really started thinking, well, this, what was going on at the end of March? We were seeing probably an increased number of students that were going out on quarantine, so that's probably the lower participation rate related to the ninth grade, uh, PSAT that we just received back. So those were two other really data points that you guys, uh, that the board requested. It kind of, and it kind of helped tell the story of, that we, uh, that, that we presented to you before break. So the, the ninth grade PSAT was fairly similar, um, in terms of overall performances. But then also the, um, the participation rates were in line with prior years with, looked like a little bit of a, uh, this current year because of all these students that were either in quarantine and couldn't come to school to take the assessment. So, uh, so any questions related to those specific data points before we move on to any other questions related to, I'll probably turn it over to Rob into some of the UCLA screeners, et cetera.
Any other questions on these slides? Just scrolling through, seeing none, okay. I think that we, um, are set. Any other questions just before we turn it over to Mr. Mancusi? Just about the data. I know that some questions maybe were submitted later this afternoon. Um, you know, of course, continue to submit questions to Mr. Cummings. Things haven't been covered tonight, um, and we can follow up after the meeting. Seeing no additional questions, we'll turn it over to Mr. Mancusi.
Hello, everybody. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education and Special Programs. Um, thank you for letting me speak about the UCLA screener tonight. We did get a couple of questions that, um, I'll address right now from Mrs. Vitale and Mr. Peterson. Uh, Mrs. Vitale wants to know when the UCLA COVID screening was administered. It was administered, um, in grades three through twelve back in December. And Mrs. Vitale asked if there would be any other follow-up screens before the end of this year in the fall, or in the fall, to see if there has been improvement. We're not planning on re-administering the UCLA COVID screener. Um, I will say that we continue to, um, be in contact with the schools and with the principals and with the psychs and social workers and our support staff on continuing to support and monitor students' engagement and students' mental health needs based on not only the results of the UCLA screener, but just on the daily performance of students. I, I will also report that the state of Connecticut, kudos to them, they are embarking on a three-year initial relationship with, um, an, an organization that specializes in, um, universal screening and intervention for students with social emotional learning needs. So we attended an initial meeting on that because we're interested in becoming, um, one of the Cohort One districts in, in, um, providing and learning about implementing a universal screener. It's K-12. Um, and then they have progress monitoring tools to assist in, in monitoring progress of interventions for students. Um, Mr. Peterson, um, I, I think he was expecting a more comprehensive, um, set of data. Um, we did, we do have data on the UCLA screening broken down by school. We did summarize it by level, um, on purpose. Um, so each school got their own individual data, they got their student responses. Um, we just, when, when we reported it out, we just reported it out by level. In terms of the screening, the questions were, um, the questions that were on the UCLA survey. And then the board had a chance to review this back before, um, it was administered. And, um, I, I believe it was, um, Mrs. Jacobson asked that we provide additional opportunity for feedback from parents and students on things that, um, benefited them, their family during the, the, the closure and things that would help their family move forward. So all those specific responses were, um, shared with the schools based on their students. And, um, if I, if I fail to share those, a sample of those comments or that feedback, I, we, we can share that with the board again, with our summary. Is there any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mancusi. Any further questions? Uh, Ms. Jacobson?
Hi. Hi, yes, um, just two quick questions, Rob. Um, the, I know we got these numbers and you're, and I'm always curious in definitions. So what is the difference between mild and elevated?
Just the, just the student score, there were ranges of scores that, uh, the total score that a student may have had after answering, um, the questions on the survey, the total score falls into one of those ranges. So I mean, a student who falls into the mildly elevated range could be one point away from a student who scores in the elevated range. That's why we, um, we combined those when we reported those out as a, as a number, mildly elevated plus elevated. And we did, when we released these, um, results to the schools, there was instructions on how to, you know, handle the information, um, to cross-reference with students you know that are currently struggling. Um, look at the type of supports they're currently getting. Um, see if there needs to be an increase in those supports, an increase in parent contact. Students that were not flagged prior to the closure, um, what kind of supports could you provide them and their family to re-engage in the process? And then, you know, to continue to, um, address your school climate needs in your building and really to keep parents engaged and students engaged throughout, you know, this pandemic.
Okay, thank you for that. And, um, just what was the participation rate like? Was it similar to, you know, our typical standardized testing results? Was it, was it high as well?
I don't, I, percentage-wise, I'll have to get that to you. Between our three through twelve, um, we had a total of four thousand eight hundred and fifteen participants who completed the survey. But I will have to get you that percentage.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was a variance.
No, that's a good question. I just, I don't want to answer wrong.
No, totally, and what that variance might be accounted for. So thank you so much.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thanks, and, and thanks, Rob, for, for, uh, addressing my, my question. I guess what I was more getting at, and I, I had to go back to the email that you sent a long time ago in November, uh, about with the UCLA questions. You know, there's a lot of interesting questions on this. Um, you know, you know, does, does somebody, you know, it says a family member needed to move away from home because of this illness? Is somebody that you know, close to you died because of this illness? Right, I mean, I guess I, I might be interested in getting that kind of color. I mean, even if it's, you know, over those, what are four thousand eight hundred responses, it would be, it would be interesting to see. But, you know, as I mentioned in my, in my question, if you think that's inappropriate for us to have, then I'm, I'm happy to skip over that. I just, I, I just think that that would be really useful to help illustrate where the students are.
We can put something together. We do have every single individual response of all those four thousand eight hundred and fifteen participants by school and by level. It would just take some time to compile that so we can put some, something together that, that, that's meaningful.
That's fair. I mean, I guess I just, you know, my expectation when this, when we were talking about this earlier in the year was not that we would get kind of a numerical score, although I, I understand that that's what you're, you know, that, that's what you, you were looking for. I, I just, I thought we would get more.
I, I will say at the school level, when, like, when there were red flags on students, those were highlighted for schools to pay close attention to and to respond to. Um, let me think about it, and I, I want to put something together that, you know, that is more meaningful to you or more satisfying to you than, um...
Well, that's fair, and I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to assign you work. Again, I think it's just a mismatch in, in what I, in what we got in the data presentation or what I thought was going to come out of this.
All right.
But thank you, thanks for that.
All right, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I think just, um, just to carry forward, being that I questioned this also, just to make sure that just because we're back, fully back in school, that the need, these students still have needs, just want to make sure that we're carrying it forward throughout the rest of the year.
I, I would say absolutely, absolutely. This is, was just an additional piece of information to really help us identify students who we already are servicing, who may have an increased level of intensity of need or students that were not on our radar. And because of, you know, some experience or trauma they may have, or their families may have experienced because of COVID, that we now have them on our radar. And we continue to provide support, not only to the student, but their families.
Thank you, and I think that's what we just want to hear, just to know that this information has been shared with the principals and at the building level, and it wasn't for us, a data point for us. So, you know, any additional color you can provide offline would be appreciated. We do want to respect student privacy, you know, in those circumstances as well.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rasmussen, anything?
Hi, that's pretty much it takes care of all, all the one that was the kind of the big themes and, uh, the big questions off that. There, I'll continue to try to look to get the answered questions that you guys submit. Uh, and I think there's some other questions related to, there's some attendance that, you can, you have to dig into that. Um, and also, I think, Mr. Peterson, you asked a question about transition, which we'll look to kind of continue to, or look to, that's always to continue to answer. That's always been a, a, a topic of, uh, that we always like to look into of those transition years.
Ms. Grunzi?
Hi, um, this is, I think, a question for Dr. Rasmussen. And I had, um, submitted this ahead of time, but, um, you know, in, in thinking about these transition years, um, I had asked for the PSAT information, which, um, you provided, so I see in that chart. But, um, I was also interested in seeing the STAR reading in math. I believe that was given out to the ninth graders, um, this year. And, um, I don't know if I missed it, but I didn't see that in the report, so, um, could you speak to that?
Specifically, the ninth grade PSA, uh, the, the STAR, that is, uh, we, we do administer that, but, uh, we were looking at the we had a lower participation rate, because a lot of times it's not given to all classes. Um, so it's, it's kind of hard to judge from one year to the next because more students take it than, uh, than, and, and what compared to one year to the other. So that, I can look to provide that, but again, it, it, those, you have to kind of look at that, uh, uh, we're kind of, really kind of critically to better understand, um, the overall performance on the STAR. Because ultimately, what it'll do, it'll start looking at overall percentages with all the students and then, but if all the students don't take the assessment, then your percentages are then go out of whack. Um, so that's where you have to be very careful with that, um, just by looking at those overall percentages.
You're on mute, Ms. Grunzi.
Sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Is the STAR, I'm just trying to clarify, is the STAR reading and math test then optional for the ninth grade teachers to give? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, it really depends on like, by the course. Um, we kind of assign it more by course, save our math. Uh, so if students that were, say, double accelerated, they're, they're taking Algebra II, um, we didn't, we didn't assign it in Algebra II this year. So you're not seeing the entire kind of spectrum of all our students, like what we do administer at the middle school and elementary. So again, you're, you're not, your, your percentages then will, will not kind of, kind of be kind of similar or parallel to or comparable to what they, how they were did say in eighth grade. So you, you just kind of, kind of, kind of be very careful with that in terms of, that's what we can, well, I can look to provide you, but we'll have, with the explanation that you have to kind of look at and, and the overall numbers, um, very carefully.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we move on?
Christine?
Yes? I can't see, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Jacobson, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My question is actually both, um, well, it's for Mr. Cummings and Mr. Rasmussen and Mr. Mancusi. Are we using any other data points, um, during our pandemic to try to, I know we talked about attendance, but percentage of students failing or percentage of students, um, using social services or other services in the school district that maybe they weren't using before? Are we looking at common formative assessments? Anything to help identify students who now need intervention or need, um, to be part of the SRBI process or, or get recovery services?
Um, we are, we are, we're, you know, I think at the elementary, middle, high, well, at all levels, really, there's always, uh, the use of formative assessments, the kind of daily student performance that's going to show up in the secondary level on the DNF list, you know, as kids, they continually monitor the DNF list to see how students are doing with grades, um, at the, at the administrator's central office type level. They, uh, but always the grade level meetings at the elementary schools, the team meetings at the middle school, I think it's just a continual source of conversation. As you said, um, attendance data, uh, attendance trend, um, student concerns, they express themselves in class. I mean, it's, those, those things happen in any year. The, the, we just know that this year, there's more of those concerns. There's more, there's more things going on in kids' lives, and, and those issues are manifesting themselves in different ways. So really, it's casting a very wide net and looking for issues and concerns as they rise up.
I guess my, since we're not talking yet about how we're going to use these federal dollars, and, but we're talking right now about how we're identifying students. My concern is that there's probably going to be an achievement gap. And I want to make sure that before you start allocating these federal funds, that you've identified the students who are in need of, and I imagine it's a lot of students, who are in need of recovery services and help to get to on grade level.
Yeah, that's what we're doing. We are, we are, we're identifying those students all the time. And as I said, as I said before, we did that in preparation as we built the budget for the summer program. Um, we'll, we'll do that with information that we gather through the end of the school year. Um, and we'll do it again, well, we'll do it all the time, but another big gathered data, kind of gathering point will be in the, in the return to school in September.
Thank you.
Other questions on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Rasmussen, um, for your work on this. And again, board members, if you have any, any follow-up questions, just please email them. Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Um, I, I didn't want to ask them because I know I submitted them a bit late, but will we get answers to the questions that weren't addressed yet from the spreadsheet?
Yes, we're gonna, I just, I actually put in a couple of questions tonight that were related to the UCLA survey. I added those to that same spreadsheet. So we're going to review those in the next couple of days and get the, you know, work on getting the responses back out to the board.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So moving on to old business approval of COMS survey, that the Board of Education approved the COMS survey. An emotion? An emotion? Mr. Asa, seconded by Mrs. Grober. Any additional questions? Mr. Peterson?
Yes, thank you. Um, at the, at the March 9th meeting, uh, we were told that we were going to get additional material by the Yukon researcher, Dr. Isaac Smith. Did we ever get that?
May I respond?
Yes, absolutely. Back to Ted Jezek.
Uh, it was in a, so I think you're referring to the, um, the sort of little version of the, um, study, Mr. Peterson, that was sent in the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I went looking for it and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, um, I'm trying to think what Friday packet with.
Friday, March 13th packet.
March 13th, there you go.
It was right after that meeting.
I wanted to make sure that, that came through at some point.
Yes, it did. They, they were very responsive, Mr. Peterson. They said it, I think, the next day or two.
Any other questions before we take this to a vote? Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Yes, thank you. And, and only because I see Dr. Smith is here. So I figure just to, for any members of the public, because that meeting seems like a lifetime ago. If we could just have a reminder about the timing of this survey, who, how many students will be involved and what we hope to achieve and gain for the district by this survey?
Absolutely, yes. So, uh, most of, of those items are, are in that document. But, um, as a reminder for you all, um, in terms of the, the timing of the survey, we are hoping that, um, each school nurse who's recruited, at this point, we've communicated with one school nurse at Stratfield Elementary, um, would enroll about two students per year. Um, all of the questionnaires and interviews that students and parents complete, um, obviously happen sort of outside of school hours. And after an informed consent process takes place, um, the time commitment on the part of the nurse, um, is a training, which again, takes place outside of school hours. So, um, the primary sort of time investment for a nurse would be, um, the 20-minute meetings that happen about once a week. Um, five meetings per child. Um, so, um, yeah, two children per nurse per year. Um, and then each nurse would be, um, meeting with and consulting with a clinical psychologist on our team, um, which again, can take place, uh, sort of on a flexible schedule. In terms of what we hope to achieve, uh, sort of the primary aim of our study, um, is we're rolling out sort of a large-scale efficacy trial. So COMS has been established and has been run, um, in, in dozens of districts in Connecticut and Maryland over the course of the past six years. Um, so this is a Department of Education-funded study to figure out, um, efficacy on a, on a much larger scale of over 200 students. Um, and in terms, again, and just in terms of the goals of the study, um, anxiety is under-identified in elementary-aged kids and even among students for whom it is identified. Many of them don't have access to, um, what we call evidence-based treatment, like cognitive behavioral therapy, which COMS is based on. And so our program is, is aimed on at building the capacity of school nurses who are really well-positioned to identify anxiety because they get students who are coming to their office, uh, with concerns that might be sort of somatic symptoms, headaches, stump gags, things like that. Um, and they might be better positioned to identify students who might benefit from that sort of intervention and who already have a relationship with those students and, and be able to implement the intervention and implement it with fidelity. And that's been our experience over the course of the past several years running COMS, that every single nurse who has ever completed it has recommended it. Um, and we have lots of data on, um, their experience, their satisfaction, parent satisfaction, um, reduction in child anxiety. Um, and again, some of those things were, um, were in the documents that I shared, but I would be happy to speak to any of those points if anyone has further questions about those. Um, I think that, I think that was most of your questions. If you, if I've missed anything, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Does anyone else have any additional questions? And just to remind the board, we did reach out to Miss, Mrs. Mitchell and she was supportive, correct, Mr. Cummings, of moving this forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, seeing no other questions, um, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor that the Board of Education approved the COMS survey? I think, let me scroll through. It is unanimous. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, um, the approval of the Roger Sherman Building Project. Not going to move this forward tonight. I thought it would be ready, but they're waiting for just some additional paperwork. There's a couple loose ends. Um, what I put on the agenda last week, we thought it was going to be done, but, um, not quite there yet. So we'll be seeing this hopefully in May. So moving on to budget update, um, for 2020, 2021, as well as 2021, 2022. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Muncell to provide an update on the current year as well as the forthcoming year budget.
Thank you. Ms. Muncell?
Um, good evening. Um, on May 11th.
Loser.
We lost you. I hit the wrong, I hit the button. Uh, sorry about that. Um, on May 11th, uh, we will have a full, uh, third quarter financial report for you with, uh, details. Um, we're in the process of finalizing those details right now. Um, what I can tell you, uh, at the moment, I'm very happy to tell you is that we were, we are no longer in a deficit situation for the, um, 2021 fiscal year. So, um, you can, uh, you can, uh, get a, a sense of relief there. Um, um, having that is a solid statement. Um, we will share the details with you on the 11th, so. So that's, uh, 2021. Uh, we are working on, uh, uh, proposed cuts for 21, 22 that we will, I believe, Mr. Cummings also provide on the 11th of, of a, a, um, a preliminary list. And then I guess the, um, the plan is to vote on them on the 24th.
25th, yes. Yep.
I think that's, um, there is regarding both years. Did I miss anything, Mr. Cummings?
No, I think that's it. I, I think some of what we're going to talk about with the budget, um, is, is they complete the third quarter, um, review is somewhat tied up with conversations we might have about the grants coming up. Um, because the, these, these intersections of funding, um, potentially, potentially have role, corresponding roles to players. We look forward to both, as we look, think about the current year as well as also the forthcoming year.
And just for the public, just in terms of where the Board of Education budget and the town budget is, it is currently, the RTM is reviewing it right now. So if you would like to share your thoughts about the budget, now is the time to do so. A RTM will be voting on Monday, May 3rd. So we have a few more weeks. Um, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, thank you, um, through you. Um, Mrs. Muncell, I was wondering, um, I know you mentioned that we're no longer in a deficit. Is that inclusive, inclusive of maintaining the hiring freeze that's in place and the dollars for building administrators that were frozen? Or have those been released?
They have not been released yet. So that does not, uh, it, it does, it, it does reflect the hiring freeze, um, but it does not reflect any, uh, release of funds to the schools or anyone, really.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we think that that might be able to happen or no?
Um, yes. That's a good possibility.
So we'll talk about that on the 11th. I just wanted to, to understand if that was good and we can now release certain things or we still need to maintain those frozen.
Uh, the reason why I haven't yet is because, uh, we don't know to what extent yet.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mrs. Muncell? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to an update on the SRTU and American Relief Fund.
Okay, uh, uh, thank you. So let me just give an update as I, as was already previewed in our conversation around the data. Uh, I want to give an update on the planning that went into the summer program. Um, as we get, as we move forward now and begin to, um, we're going to be posting soon for positions for that, um, identifying students and letters, all, all the books that will begin for that. Um, it, uh, so I'm talking specifically about here about the SRTU funding. The SRTU, it's important to remember, is a two-year grant. So what we're putting in for a summer program, um, is essentially for both this summer of 2021 and it will also extend it this summer of 2022. The grant, like many grants allows for, um, you know, if, if, let's say, we budget too high this year, um, we'll be able to reallocate that funding to some, some other sources. We'll put it into next summer or we'll put it into something else. Um, but the grant does allow that flexibility because certainly planning for summer, you're, you're planning that everybody's going to love your idea and show up at your doorstep every day and just cannot wait to go to summer school. And we live in the world and we know that's probably not going to happen. Um, but I think that the program directors, as we began to develop this idea, have, have approached this with the absolute right attitude. Um, and I'll talk about the work that we've done today and the work that is still to come. So essentially what we're talking about is, as the board members well know, um, for the past few years, we've had an early literacy academy at Stratfield School. Um, over those years, we've identified about 100 students in K1, uh, 2 entering, and, um, uh, leaving K1, 2 to, uh, boost their early literacy skills. We essentially, uh, folded that program in to this summer boost program. So we've extended this now K8. And as I mentioned earlier, we've used the STAR scores as a starting point to identify students. We've run those, those lists of students out in front of the individual schools. The schools have responded by saying yes or no to students. Um, you know, the, the STAR score reflected an underperformance that they're seeing in the classroom or an overperformance that they're seeing in the classroom. Um, the schools also could then supplement with other names of students. Uh, we didn't limit them to a number. I want to be clear on that. So, um, what we've developed then, as, off of that list, we've identified essentially two program components for this summer. And again, we would continue to next summer. Uh, the first program, uh, component is, again, this expansion of the literacy, the boost program, although it is not limited to just literacy, uh, this summer, it would be literacy and math. We've identified 300, um, K8 students who are in need of additional support. Keeping in mind that this is a four-week program, running, um, that week right after 4th of July, uh, through the end of July. Um, some of the other program design components, we wanted to keep class sizes low. So at, at average, it's, it's a one teacher for every 10 students. Uh, what we wanted to do was we did not want to create, uh, a program that was, um, a drill and skill type program. You know, drill, skill and no thrill. Uh, what we essentially have decided to do is create a program that would more simulate the, um, the summer camp type program for students. We are going to be working with a number of our, um, uh, teachers, um, media specialists, some of our other creative, uh, staff to develop a curriculum this summer, uh, for each of the grade levels that will, um, incorporate those skills, uh, certainly include some direct instruction in those skills, uh, but also try to introduce, uh, those skills through the areas of science and social studies as well. It's going to run for, as I said, for four weeks. It would run from four, is four hours a day, 8:30 to 12:30. Um, we're linking that right now because of, uh, it's a K8 program. We probably would use both the elementary school and a middle school. Um, we're going to staff it with a program administrator at each level. Uh, we want to include lead teachers. One of the more successful components of the, um, literacy summer program over the years has been a lead teacher who essentially provides the professional learning for the teachers, um, during the course of the day, as well as we, we put in an extra hour every week for professional learning. Um, so we want to make sure that we continue that support in, in this, in this program. The, in addition, given some of the concerns that have been raised this year around social, emotional needs of students as well, um, we're going to include social workers. Um, we're going to include, uh, paraprofessional support for a lot of the logistics that the program entails. You know, um, uh, boss arrivals, dismissals, those types of things. Um, we're going to have secretary support and, and, um, we also are required to have nursing care at each of those sites. And again, I mentioned, uh, obliquely, uh, transportation would also be provided in this. That's one of the program components. And we'll be meeting with teachers, I think it's in two weeks. Uh, a group of teachers have been identified to come in and begin to work on developing that curriculum. So we'll be able to provide more details to board members in, in coming weeks. The, the other program component is a tutoring program. And, um, what we, we know that because of different reasons, for different reasons, uh, some of our identified students will not be able to attend the boost program. And while we can't replicate that, a four-week, four-hour-a-day, uh, program, um, in, in another fashion, what we're looking at is, um, a small group tutoring that would be more direct instruction, um, based on, um, students' common needs. So we would group students by common learning needs, um, literacy and/or math. Uh, this would run for seven weeks, uh, beginning that same week and running into August. It would be, consist of two 45-minute sessions per week for each of these groups. Uh, and again, it would be small group instruction. Uh, we're thinking, uh, teacher ratio, one to five, one to seven, something like that. Uh, and that may also include, um, again, because of attendance issues or concerns, that also might include instruction that's provided online, uh, through virtual learn, distance learning. The, the total program cost for the two-year summer program is, um, $732,754. Um, we can provide the board with a, uh, well, we can actually, when we submit the grant, which is due, um, end of this month, we can provide a board, the board with a copy of the grant, which has a, a breakdown of, of the cost basis for all of this. Um, but obviously the number one factor in all this will be staffing. If you think about 300 kids, we're talking about the identification of 30 classroom teachers at minimum, uh, as well as the additional teacher leader, program administrators, those types of things. And that obviously is the biggest cost driver for this type of program. One of the concerns, as I talked about, we have concerns of that, um, we want to make the program fun so students will attend. Uh, but one of the other things that we are concerned about is, given the release of these dollars into, um, for all school systems, there will be competition for teachers. Um, the, the board has supported an increase, um, in the hourly rate, uh, that's reflected in our 21, 22 budget. So the rate that we're going to pay our teachers is going up. Uh, but we do expect that, um, it's going to be tough to find teachers this year, particularly given, um, teach, many of our staff and many of the staff in exist, in other districts, our neighboring districts are really at a, uh, need some rest this summer. So, uh, we hope by making the program fun for kids, uh, we'll also make it much more fun for the teachers to be involved with. So if there's any questions I can answer or address tonight?
Mr. Telly?
Hi, thank you. Um, I have a question. Um, maybe, um, it's more directed towards Mr. Mancusi. In the past, um, is there like a general percentage of when you're offering ESY, um, towards the end of the year for qualified students? How many have opted to take it and how many don't? So if you're gonna, if you have 300 kids in mind, do you have a roundabout how many will accept the program thought in your mind, depending on, you know, um, years past and what sped has seen?
Well, I'm sorry, Rob, because like, you want to answer this as well. But I, I will tell you, Ms. Telly, based on our experience with this current summer boost program, um, we wind up with about an, uh, acceptance rate, uh, initially of around 80%. And then what we do is we work with the schools, once we know that students who are not going to attend, we work with the schools to identify additional students who may benefit. So we, 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 we aim to fill the program with 300 students.
Mr. Mancusi?
Yeah, hi, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. Um, the past couple of years, we've had about 600 students have been determined eligible for extended year services. Um, we have a four-year, four-week and a six-week, um, ESY program. Families, um, may come for only part of that because they may, may go on vacation or they may have other plans during that time. We do work with them on that. In terms of the percentage of students who attend ESY, I, I would have to get that, that percentage for you. I could tell you just last year, ESY and last year may not be a good measuring stick because, um, aside from our live, um, in-person related services for our, our most impaired students. students, most of our ESY was done virtually. And after having gone, um, through a spring that was really difficult to acclimate to virtual learning, particularly for a lot of our students with special needs, um, many families chose not to participate last summer. But I could look back at the, the two or three summers prior to that when I was here to see if I can get, um, the number of students who, who we determined eligible for ESY and the number who's students who attended. That may be difficult, but I, I think it's worth looking at.
Okay, and would we be planning to offer, um, online services to any families who may not feel comfortable attending in person?
That's a very good question. Right now, um, because we're planning the PPT through the PPT process as if we are in full-time, live, um, in a non-pandemic year, we are planning for in-person learning for our ESY. As the requests, as we collect the number of requests for potential virtual learning, we're expecting we may have to adjust.
Yeah, and just, you know, as, um, personal experience with ESY in the past, um, for both, um, my typical child who went through the McKinley program and a child who received services, the more fun you can make it, the better, especially as they get older. Um, because I think it's, you know, it will be easier to get those younger grades in, but, you know, at, you know, five through eight will be tough, I'm sure.
It's, it's, it's an excellent point.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, a couple of quick questions. Mr. Cummings, the tutoring program, I didn't hear the grades for that.
I'm sorry, that's K-8 as well.
Okay, so my question is, what about 912?
912, we're looking at, we, we're still looking at options for 912. We're not sure how, we haven't yet had an opportunity to have a conversation with the high school administration on how to approach this one. We're, we're, we know that the attendance issues with high school are, are just greater. I mean, as, as kids get older, we're going to have more difficulty getting them to, to attend during the summer. So what we're wondering about is how to best approach the, uh, summer learn, or the learning loss issues with, with high school. And we, and we've not yet had that conversation with the high school to get them involved with that.
So at this point, it's just a typical credit recovery?
That, that's what it is. And we, you know, we have that existing structure. So can we, if we have something going on, we could add to that. It, it already has a lot of the program components we need to add for the, the new program. But how we do that, I'm, we're just not sure yet. What's the best approach, essentially, we have to identify?
Okay, um, so if I heard you correctly, this is coming out of ESER 2, which is about half of that amount, um, for these two summer programs. And my question around that was, um, so I understand that you want to make it fun and obviously totally get that it's summer, we want kids to come. But as, since we are spending a significant amount of money on this, and this is based on identification of need, um, to, to boost literacy and/or math, is there going to be a component of this where there's kind of an individualized goal, where you're saying, okay, you're here and we want you at the end of the four hours, four weeks to be here by student? Okay, all right, so that's built into this programming where you're actually going to have set goals for students and, and, okay.
We are going to give this star assessment and use the star assessment to set, uh, expectations for student learning during those four weeks.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
Yeah, thank you. And I apologize if I got confused in this and, Mrs. Rotelli bringing up ESY, I thought that was something completely separate and apart from what was being discussed here. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
So there is still the ESY program, which is part of our budget. We already have that in the works. This is a separate 300 students, some of whom might be sped identified, some of whom will not, who are K through eight, looking to address learning loss. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I, and I reiterate, I, I would hope that this is all in person. And certainly if we decide to make any of it, any component of this remote, um, honestly, I would hope it would be an all or nothing. A teacher would be teaching either to an entirely, you know, group of 10 remote or entirely a group of 10 in person, if we even go that way at all, that we're not going to try to do dual teaching with this.
Ms. Max, can I, can I address that? You're right, I think that what we're talking about for the four-week program is all in person, that will not have a virtual component. What we're thinking about with the tutoring program is, um, one, you know, from a, you know, I put it this way, from a marketing perspective, that might be more attractive to certain families as well as to some staff. Uh, and we wanted to, we thought that if we approached that one with a more of a virtual component, it might just, um, in, increase our ability to, to, um, get students to attend.
No, I, I, I appreciate the option for them, so I, I'm not opposed to it. I just definitely don't want...
There won't be mixing.
Great. And in terms of how this gets budgeted, because I know obviously we're coming off of last year with the, um, the non-recurring account, is this going to have its own, I don't know if this should best go to Ms. Moncell, is this going to have its own budgeting page where we are again, for the whole ESER funding? Because obviously that's not in our budget right now, and yet we're preparing to expend funds on this. How is that going to be documented?
Um, it'll be documented just like we do any of the other grants in the budget book. There's the, the income section, we'll show the income, and then behind that, there'll be, um, financial reports as to, um, how the money is spent, how the money is budgeted and how the money is spent.
Right, but my point being that right now, it's not in the 2122 budget. That, our budget book doesn't have that in it. It has none of this expenditure in that, and it has none of this revenue in there.
It won't show, it will show up in the 2223 budget book when the next, when we're working on the budget next year. It will be in there and, and we'll follow it through for however, you know, for the duration. I'm not understanding the question.
So I don't know, maybe if I direct this to Mrs. Vitale, is this something that's going to have to be part of our May, you know, adjusting of our budget, that we are going to be adding new budget lines that are going to account for this? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Um, this will be completely separate from our budget and whatever, whatever, um, whatever is budgeted in there, if it is something that, um, there was a component of in the 20, in the, in the 21, in our Board of Ed 2122 budget that can be pulled out of there, that would be, you would know that, you would see that, you would vote on that.
So hypothetically, I'm just going to make up a, a nice even, even number. Say that we had allocated, um, $300,000 to PPE equipment, which we now wanted to pay for, that will be something we cut, and there's going to be a whole separate accounting for all of this. And that's something we'll get as part of our quarterly reports. I'm trying to make the numbers match.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that works for me. And I was hoping, Mr. Cummings, you could explain a little bit more, what's going to be the leadership for both of these two programs in terms of, you know, you've got this pool of 30 teachers, you've got this pool of tutors, what's the leadership of this program going to look like for the summer?
What we've done in the past is, um, at, at the Strathfield program, uh, we hired a teacher leader. What we look for is, uh, we look for, um, current teachers who have an interest in becoming administrators. Um, in the past, we've, we've had such a person in place at the Strathfield program for the past few years. We would look to, if they're interested in continuing, they'd be a natural choice to continue in that role with the elementary. We would look for a similar position at the second, at the middle school level as well. So it's essentially an opportunity to get some leadership experience, run a program, work with the program directors and the executive directors, um, to get it running. And then we provide administrative support during the course of the summer to, to that person.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jacobson?
Just really quickly, um, Mike, just some back of the napkin, um, math here. So the first program, the boost, is a 20-hour program and the tutoring is 10. Does that sound right to you? 45 minutes times, is an hour and a half times seven is 10?
Yeah, I think that's right, yep.
So I guess my question is, for $732,000, is 10 hours enough time or 20 hours even? I mean, I don't, I can't, I don't know what the depth of what you're looking to achieve because we don't have like the goals necessarily in front of us and, and that. So if this is incremental or, or big, do, do you think that this is enough time to move the needle?
Yep, we did. We looked at it from that perspective and we were, you know, we, Ms. Jacobson, we were looking to balance, um, in our, in our kind of figuring, you know, trying to anticipate what would be, um, what would also work with students and family schedules for that program. But, uh, we did think that that was the, the right number. I mean, the program directors, um, executive directors, Dr. Parrish, doctors have a chance that Mr. Mancusi and I spent some time, um, playing that out as, in different scenarios. It really wasn't a dollar issue for us.
Yeah.
You know, it was an issue of, uh, what we thought would be the, um, right, right amount of instructional time. That's why that program went an extra few weeks, because we knew that the four weeks wasn't going to be adequate enough. We wanted to go and then we stopped at seven weeks because we just knew that the staff particularly, or the parents, families would need a week or two off before school actually started again.
Okay, I mean, did you find that if you took that tutoring program to an hour instead of the 45 minutes, that it was significantly different?
No, I think it was more an issue of, um, trying to think about how many staff might be available to teach this, how many sections might they be able to do in a day? You know, knowing that, given the, given the latitudes of the summer, working with the groups that they get, um, you know, some of this could even be done in the early evening type of thing. Uh, but how, but trying to think about what would be a reasonable amount of, of ones that could be done a day. Now, now having said that, as we go through the process and, um, you know, get our responses back, both in terms of the number of kids who apply and, um, and staff that we're able to hire, we have flexibility in the grant to, to move money. So in other words, if, if, um, we're just not getting the in-school attendance, but we're seeing a more of a demand for the online tutoring, we could both increase the number of groups and the hours.
Okay.
So there's, there's going to be some room to adjust as we go forward.
Okay, awesome. All right, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none on that.
Like, Ms. Vitale, I just want to talk briefly about the ARP money. The, uh, that, that grant, we are aware, the state received its funding for that. We've not yet received the funding for that. We've not yet received an application for that. It's important to remember a couple of things about this, this grant, the, the American Relief Plan. One, that's a significant more amount of money. It's, I think, around $3.2 million. But it also extends to the end of the 2024 calendar year. 20% of that money has to be set aside to address, um, learning loss or unfinished learning. So we've had some discussion, as I mentioned earlier, about what that would look like, how that might take place in the schools. As I said earlier, um, you know, the only way you're going to guarantee that you're going to get the kids that you need to get is, is building a program that's part of the school day. So that's, that's something we have to look at and we have to have further conversations with our, um, district administration and, and some, and some of our teaching staff. The other part of that funding, though, we're just having preliminary conversations about what it might, what we might be able to do with that. And one of my cautions with this is, uh, you know, having gone through the, um, the ARRA money, uh, back in 2009, 10, 11, the, the danger that districts found themselves in with the expensing, spending those funds, um, was they bought themselves into programs that they, when the money ran out, the program ran out. So being mindful of those expenses and thinking about how we can, um, use the funds to either do short-term type of maintenance, short-term, I don't, I mean, like a maintenance project that's going to last a few brief years. Or the other thing that I, I think we need to look at is how we might use it to support, um, professional learning that's going to improve, taking advantage of this influx of money to build instructional capacity across the district over those couple of years, um, so that at the end of it, um, our teachers are, are, the professional staff is better prepared for moving forward, um, when the, when the funding runs out. So those are just kind of preliminary conversations. We expect that we should be getting the application sometime in May and at a point we'll obviously have further conversations with the board about, um, how, how that money could be allocated and, and possibly divided up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the American Relief Fund? Okay, um, moving on to open choice enrollment, 2021, 2022. Um, as you know, when we built this, the proposed budget for next year, we did not include an increase in open choice students. At that time, you know, we were still, there was a lot of uncertainty in terms of where we would be with the pandemic. Things have changed over the last six months, thanks to the vaccine. So I think that we need to have the discussion now. Per our racial imbalance plan, we should be at 100 students. We are not there. As we talk about, you know, issues about equity and moving forward as a district, I thought it would be helpful to, um, bring this back before the board to have the discussion. There also is, uh, financial impact potentially. As you know, we, the district does get $3,000 per open choice student if we're at a certain level, and the town will get, if that student, that open choice student is counted as a half a student to the, from the sending district and the receiving district, so that would impact ECS funding that goes to the town side. So that is why it is, it is on the agenda tonight. And with that, I will give it over to Mr. Cummings for just a little additional information.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to quickly turn this over to Dr. Parrish. Dr. Parrish has done a lot of work, um, looking at our current enrollment, doing some projections on where, um, future enrollment can go. And as the board is aware, she prepared a number of reports, which the board has had the chance to look at. And so really, I, I think we can have a conversation about, um, direction and get some board thoughts on where we should go next. We do have, um, a impending due date with CES to identify open slots, which Dr. Parrish can speak to as well. So that said, Dr. Parrish?
Good evening, uh, boards. K. Parrish, Executive Director of Operations and Processing. As Mr. Cummings mentioned, we do have a deadline of April 23rd to let CES know what our intentions are in terms of opening up open choice enrollment. Currently, um, for the current school year, we have 71 students, um, that are currently enrolled in Fairfield Public Schools through the open choice program. Uh, it spans from grades three through grade 11. Uh, and I will say that as of next year, there is at least one student who has decided to go to a different school district. So that will leave a remaining number of, at 70, um, open choice students in, in the event we do not, uh, open up and, and make, add additional seats. But based on conversations I had with Mr. Cummings in terms of looking at the elementary placement and, and the best grades to look at in terms of where we could place students, we felt that grades one, two, and three were the best, um, grades to look at in terms of placement, uh, within the elementary school and grades six, six and seven in the middle school and grades nine and 10 at the high school. So looking at those early grades within those different levels so that we weren't, um, looking at kids that were finishing up, uh, either, uh, an elementary school and going on to middle, and in also the case for middle and high school. So within the, the elementary schools, um, the spreadsheet that you all were provided, what I did was I looked at the enrollment projection that was provided in the budget book, um, and based on that projection, looked at what would be the number of possible seats that would be available, um, in those three grades across all 11 schools, uh, based on the maximum class size. So in the event that there were one to three open seats within a, within a certain section, we did not add any open choice seats. we did not add any open choice seats. Where there was four to six seats open, we added one open choice seat. And if there were seven or more open seats, we added two additional seats or for open choice. And that, under that calculation, that initially brought us to a higher number than where we are now, we subsequently went back and looked at the impact that those students would have on the class size if we were to move them forward in subsequent years. This was at, by the, based off a recommendation from members of the Finance Committee. So looking at that and, and identifying where they, those students would potentially trigger an additional section of a course, we then went back and made some additional reductions. So the final number for elementary was 55 students. We did have to completely remove all of the open choice seats at Holland Hill because it would trigger additional sections. There was a reduction at Riverfield in grade one and grade three for that very reason and at Sherman in grades one and two. So you'll notice that there, for those particular schools, even though they might have open seats, there weren't students or open choice seats added in those grades for that reason, so that we didn't trigger another section being generated at those sites. So 55 students in elementary and grades six and seven across the three middle schools, looking at not only the total enrollment impact that the open choice seats would have, but also the impact it would have on the number of teams at those schools. So making sure it didn't trigger the need for an additional team. And so based on that, we looked at adding four students per grade in grades six and seven at each middle school for a total of 24 open choice seats. Following the same pattern that I did for the elementary school, I did roll those students up. I also looped in the students coming from their feeder elementary schools into the enrollment projection for the next few years in order to identify whether or not it would impact, again, the number of teams. Finally, looking at the high schools, grades nine and 10, again, adding four at each high school in each of those grades for a total of 16 open choice seats. Looking again at the enrollment, as we saw in the projection that was provided in the budget book, the enrollment for high school does dip a little bit over the next few years, so adding those additional students, even with the theater schools would not result in a huge balloon in the enrollment of either of the two high schools. And so with the 55 elementary, the 24 middle school, the 16 elementary, that would be a total of 95 students through open choice for the 21, 22 school year. That would be additional seats in addition to the 70 were already currently continuing on in the open choice program for next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Any questions from board members? Ms. Picko?
So I don't know if everybody on the call is aware that I am the CES liaison for the Board of Ed. And so this came up at our last meeting and I sent over to Mr. Cummings and Ms. Vitale all of the data and information that I had gotten from CES's Executive Director. I'm a little concerned that Fairfield was not included in a new plan to up the amount of tuition for, from the state. We are currently getting 3,000 per student, but many districts in our county, our RESC, were up to $4,000 because they had such low numbers. I believe like Easton, Region Nine, had only four students. And so they were offered this new program. I, I also brought it to the CES meeting. My concern that other RESCs like CREC offer an additional amount of up to $22,000 per student. In addition, the state also offers up to $8,000 in tuition for student. And so my question was, why was Fairfield left out of this? And the, the answer I keep getting back is a percentage of students. And we are one of the districts that has a higher number compared to other districts of open choice students. So that's the part that I wanted to bring. I also sent over like how they, their criteria when choosing students from Bridgeport in a lottery system, they don't really have like a criteria, it's a lottery. How many students are put in? And then based on how many we choose, they, it's just chosen at random. They're not discriminatory in any way. They wanted to make that very clear. Personally, I honestly don't know how we can have this conversation when in our next meeting, we have to find out how to find $2 million out of our budget. We have told students and families in this district that we're not going to run their math academy, that we're not going to run their RLAL Academy, but we're going to bring in more students from another district, which frankly, costs way more than $3,000 a year to educate them. And, and you know, I'll let to some other Board of Ed members speak to this, but in the past year, there has been such an achievement gap in this pandemic that we are going to have to make up for that. And I just, I just don't think we should be doing this right now. So I will be voting it down.
Mrs. Maxine Canelli?
Oh, thank you. First of all, it, it, tell me if, I believe that with 95 additional students, I believe that triggers us moving from 3,000 to 4,000 a student. Is that correct? Because it's once you pass two, once you pass 2% of your student population.
Yes, it has to be at 2%. You have to be 2% higher to trigger the next level of increase.
And having 165 open choice students doesn't do that?
No.
All right, I just did the math really quick, so I did the math incorrectly then. So I mean, because I, I'm, I'm familiar with how you get to the 3,000, 4,000, 6,000, 8,000. The one thing about this that's quite compelling for me, so this would be, all right, so that's then, let me redo the math, eight. This also would trigger a half a million dollars to the town in terms of the ECS funding. If you take half of our PPE, which is, would be according to the budget book, 9,571, that money multiplied by these new students, that's a half a million dollars that this would also be bringing into the town, which I think then could be a rather interesting discussion with the town on, on how that money could in any way benefit the Board of Ed. But it's also bringing in 300,000 to 400,000 for the district to meet that $2 million budget cut that we're dealing with, excuse me, cut to our increase that we are dealing with. So I think this is something we, you know, it, it's, again, I, I don't, Mrs. Picko referenced, Ms. Picko referenced voting this down. I don't believe this is a voting item. But obviously, the numbers are due by this Friday and then we're going to have to be factoring it into our May discussion, but by May, it's already done. So those are just some things that I'd, I'd like to enter into the conversation. Also, one other question I had though to, through the chair to Dr. Parrish, when we put this, whatever we put into CES, is it bulk by grade or do we have to designate the school already at that time?
So when, when we send back the, the list of open spots, it is by grade. We will also identify by school. So they, they, the way that the, the report we complete is actually broken down as they actually ask us how many seats we have within each grade, then we actually will identify, and it's, it's by school. So it's, it's disaggregated by school and by grade. So it's not all lumped together, grade three across Fairfield Public Schools. It's grade three at Osborne Hill, how many seats do you have available?
And what freedom do we have to adjust that between now and August?
That I would have to find out. I'm not sure on what adjustment opportunities that we have between now and then.
If, if you could find that out, because obviously you look at something like Riverfield that right now is looking at sections of 15, 16, and 16 for first grade. And you've got other schools where the sections are 19 and 20 and they're getting the students added and Riverfield isn't. I mean, that, that was just one example that, that jumped out at me. And I recognize what you're saying regarding first grade might be fine, it's when we move to third grade that then we have an FTE impact. So I, I appreciate that that thinking has already been done. But there's so much that is going to change between now and August. I don't need to tell you that because you, you already had to live through, you know, the, all that last minute, you know, jockeying in the, in the month of August of exactly what the FTE counts is. So I, I do think it's important for the district to know that we would have some flexibility to make these decisions, especially, I, I would, obviously, we don't, once a student is in our school, they're in the school. But until they come in, it's, you know, I, I, even if, even if we had till the end of June, any flexibility in that would be helpful.
I can find that, that answer out and get back to you.
Yes, Mr. Cummings?
I can jump in. I just, I want, I just did the math to Ms. Maxine Canelli's question about the 2%, as, as, as Dr. Parrish said, when we get to 2%, we kick into the $4,000 per student? Based on the budget, I'm looking at the budget book for our projected enrollment for 21, 22. With 93, 9,379 students, we would need to get, we would need to reach a number of 188 total open choice students in the district. That would, yeah, if, if 9,379 students show up, then we're going to need, we would need to have placement for 188 open choice students to reach a 2%.
Okay, thank you. I was going off of the wrong denominator.
Christine, can I just follow up to that?
Um, Tricia, just for once, can I, Ms. Munsell had her hand up. I'm just going to let her.
Yeah, hi, just want to clarify something. I'm not sure I caught everything that Ms. Maxine Canelli said about the PPE, but the, on the average daily membership of counting of students, Bridgeport gets to count half a student and we count half a student for ECS. So I'm not sure that that equates to those dollar amounts, though.
I was, I tried to look up the state statute number before the meeting and it, and it, it's supposed to be based on the districts, not the sending district. The sending district gets their half and the receiving district gets it, its half. And according to the budget book, 50% of our PPE would be 9,571.
I'm not, I'm not sure it works that way, though. I don't think it's that simplistic in, in the calculation. It will impact the calculation, okay?
Could you get those numbers?
I can try. I don't know if, it's a very, ECS is a very complex calculation. I can try, but I, I'm not, I can't make promises on that.
But again, and, and this is, I, I'm, I'm new for this, Ms. Munsell, so I apologize for my ignorance. I'm not trying to get into the ECS funding, but if we have a, an identified per pupil expenditure number and it's 50% of that number, then how does it get more complicated than that?
It's 50% of the student, not, that goes into calculating the number, not 50% of the cost of, of the dollars.
That's on how I'd read it. Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Picko?
I'm actually going to let Jen Jacobson go first.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah. Thank you. I actually have a couple more questions for Mrs. Munsell. It might have to do with the foundational amount, not the total for ECS, but just to let you know. About that. Mrs. Munsell, I know that we also receive the special education costs that may arise from open choice students' needs from the receiving district. And I just went back a few years and, you know, what we budgeted versus what we received was a little bit lower than that. Is that because the need didn't come in where we expected? Or because they, within available appropriations for this program were, were run out, basically?
It's because the needs, well, the budget was based on the needs that we knew we had at the time, that students had at the time. That doesn't necessarily mean that the needs were the same the following year.
Okay, understood. I did, I mean, it's an estimate going in, I understand. I just wanted to clarify what was the reason, that it wasn't because there was a shortage in that area for us. So, Mr. Cummings, my question for you is, I know, and Dr. Parrish, thank you for all of the work that you put into all of these documents to sort of explain this. I know that you've identified these 95 slots, but Mr. Cummings, are you suggesting that at this time in one swoop that we would take on, you know, an additional 95 students or for 133% increase in open choice at this time? Or is this an overtime thing that you're trying to build towards?
No, what I, what I wanted the board, you know, based on conversations we've had, you know, someone with the Finance Committee, but also just in part of the budget process. You know, one of the things that we've talked about is, well, we've got two issues that we have to face. One, one is the, the continuing effort to bring a greater degree of racial balance to our schools and really putting that against the larger issue of equity and, and diversity in our school system. And then secondary to that, but, but I know very much on people's minds is, how, how do we increase revenue? How do we, how do we work to, to change the way some of our budget is currently structured? And, you know, with the rising costs all the time, there's been board conversation and there's been Finance Committee conversation about ways to finance or ways to increase revenue. So this presents as an opportunity to do that. To, to my mind, what's important about tonight's discussion is to get the board's thoughts around this. As, as Ms. Maxine Canelli said, it's not a voting item and we do have to bring this forward, but we do, we do have the possibility to, to make this change this, this week and, or to at least initiate, begin to initiate this change this week. But I wanted to get a sense, I know that this has been a, a topic of conversation with this board and other boards in town. Before going forward, I wanted to get a sense of, of the body, of, of their thoughts to help guide us in our decision-making in Central Office.
Okay. You know, I'll just be honest, I feel like it's a very large number to go from 70 to 166 out of the gate just at this time because of all the things that we just talked about in the previous parts of this meeting. And going through the budget process, we heard from Mr. McQuesy about how, you know, we have so much SEL needs, we have trauma needs, we needed to hire more social workers, we cut art to do that. We've got learning loss matters. We're not getting that much federal funding to address all of this relative to Bridgeport. And that funding doesn't follow, right? So Bridgeport would still be getting all of that money while we have students. So I'm always, you know, I have been a strong, you know, I, I totally support open choice and always have. My concern, and I'll be honest with you, is right now, given all of the situation that we have with our students here in Fairfield right now, to address at this time, that concerns me to add to teachers that are going in. We don't know what next year is going to look like. We don't know what we're going to have to accommodate for next year at this point. We don't know what we're going to be asking teachers again to do next year. We've had issues with that this year. This does increase some class sizes, you know, at certain schools. So there's a host of reasons why at this time I find this to be a difficult proposal. As much as I support, you know, open choice at this, in general, you can't admit that we are in a, we're in a bit of a situation. So I'm not sure why we would at this point suggest this amount going into the summer and going into everything that we need to address for the students that we have. So in terms of that thinking, Mr. Cummings, the capacity for Fairfield Public Schools at this point to address everything we need to address, facility-wise and otherwise, you know, coupled with this proposal, how do we reconcile those, those two compete, what I find to be competing needs?
I don't, well, I don't, I think that they, what I hear you saying is the, the concern that they would add to the existing needs, right, that there would be an increase.
Well, I don't know that.
No, no, potentially. What I heard you say, there the important word, there were many important words, what you said, I don't want to. But one of the important words I heard you say was about capacity. Right? And our ability to um, to go beyond our capacity to effectively address the needs of our existing students.
Right.
Right. Uh, and I think that that's a fair point. I think that that's something we we have to consider. I I think that there's um, there's two ways to look at this. There's there's the, there's the uh, obviously, the challenges that this year has brought to so many kids and their families and what that's going to be like when they return to school in in, you know, with all hope, uh, full time in September. You know, for what we could, we would like to consider a normal school day, school week, school year. But also how I I look at it another way is as um, will, given the number, I I recognize the number is is great, but given the size of our district and the number of grades and classrooms potentially impacted, does it, does that impact, is that impact potentially minimized by the spread of those students across the districts in the different school sites? Um, and will they be more effectively absorbed in in it at a period of time when we as a district are gearing up for a a higher quality response to student learning needs? Um, this, in some ways, this might be the year to do it. Because we're we're, we're going to be having to expand our scope of attention and support for these students now, for all of our students now. And um, and uh, so I I wonder if it actually presents an opportunity. I think I I think there's two ways to look at that.
Okay, and and I appreciate your answer, but the bottom line is is that we are not getting the funding for those students. Bridgeport will continue to get that funding. I don't know why it was built that way, and I can't explain that. Um, it's unfortunate. Um, but it is a significant difference.
You're absolutely right.
It's a significant difference. And, you know, um, I I I don't want, I mean, the the minimal amount that we are getting to address the issues of this pandemic needs to be focused on the the situation that we have in front of us at this time, as far as what, that's just how I feel. Um, and, you know, we have never actually, as a board, as far as I remember, maybe someone who's been on for a longer time than me, um, or in the audience longer, if that's possible, but um, you know, there's never been an analysis of open choice, and I don't know if that's something that the district does actually engage in behind the scenes, not necessarily at the board table or with us, but how are we doing by those students that we already have? You know, is there, do we run separate reporting to make sure? You know, I'm just trying to understand how successful is it to begin with? Um, so I just have a lot of questions right now. I'm really concerned about, you know, next year in the summer and making sure that we're doing right by everyone that we have, um, including the open choice students that we do have. Now, I'm not opposed to adding some open choice students to get us back to where we normally would be, you know? Um, because we are lower than we typically have been in the 80 to 85 range. Um, but to an additional 95, I think at this point is 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 difficult for me. Sorry, that's just how I feel, given the where we are right now. So it's not about being against doing this. It's just because of what, how much we have to lift right now.
Yeah, understood.
And, Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you were necessarily recommending the full amount. I think that part of this was just to give in terms of maximum capacity right now, if you look at it based on um, headroom and classrooms. And as I did mention earlier, you know, we do have a racial imbalance plan that we are supposed to still be following. I know that we were at the point before the pandemic that we were looking at redistricting as the next step. But we do still need to report on the progress that we are trying to make on that plan. We've sort of had a reprieve for the last year due to the pandemic. Um, I expect that the state will be looking for us to to report um, on our next steps moving forward for next year. So I'm somewhat concerned that we're not having any movement on this right now. Um, and I would really like the board's feedback, maybe not 95, but would you do 20? Would you do 30? There is, if it doesn't seem to be a cost driver, it does potentially fill part of the $2 million you know, budget reduction that we are seeing right now. And I think that to do our due diligence, that we do need to have that conversation as a potential source of revenue. Um, Dr. Parrish, I don't know if you noticed, I read something. I'm not sure if it's accurate or not. Do districts receive $6,000 per student if they increase their current open choice enrollment by 50%? Like, for that first year?
I'm not aware of that, but maybe Miss Munsell would know the funding piece of it.
I'm not aware of that either.
All right, I'll have to check on that. Um, so just any other feedback from other board, Mr. Asa?
Thank you.
Sure.
I do have several comments on this. Um, to your point of not a cost driver, I don't necessarily know if that's accurate. I don't think we do. Um, because I don't think we have accurate analysis on this, and I don't think we're taking into consideration the non monetary costs. Um, but um, I absolutely, Mrs. Jacobson hit the nail on the head with a lot of the things that I was gonna say, so I won't belabor them, but I I do agree and believe that we have an imbalance at many of our schools. Um, and not in the way at McKinley. I think the balance at McKinley is actually excellent. Um, and and I would love to see more of that at other schools. Um, but we definitely have many schools in the district um, that are lacking, um, you know, minority. Now, that's not to guarantee that open choice kids are all going to be, um, you know, counted as the minority, so that should be stated. Um, I I think this is an absolutely poor strategy, um, as opposed with regard to going for revenue. Um, I think that makes no sense. I don't think it's a proper strategic plan. Um, you know, when you look at the uh, when you look at the hidden costs, right? So so we don't know what the needs of these students are, and you can say that you're going to be compensated and everything, but we're we're not talking about adding, you know, this money and adding FTE, right? So we're not talking about adding FTEs. We're trying to do this without adding FTEs, right? So what about the students that we take in that do need services? What does that do to the caseloads of our existing workers? And and what is the cost of that, non monetary, right? We already know in our case time, our step. What's that? I think trash and and then Jacobson said is the right time to expend the plan. Uh, we know for a fact that adding open choice can never be a solution for us. We know, we were told the.
We're losing, we're losing, you're going.
Sorry, sorry, I accidentally muted myself. We know what the numbers would need to be um, to to actually have an effect for our racial imbalance, and we're never getting. So that's not the answer. And to say that we should get to the 100 to show the state that we're making an effort is ludicrous. Um, we, if we're going to solve racial imbalance, we know what we need to do. We started talking about it before the pandemic. We started talking about the facility utilization and redistricting. And that's honestly the only way we're going to solve racial imbalance. So to take on 90 something students at this point, I just think is misguided and just inopportune time. I do not support this at all. I do support the notion of open choice, like Mrs. Jacobson said. I think the idea is, but we need to be clear. Why do we take open choice kit? Is it for the revenue? Because if that's the reason, then I don't think that's the right reason for it. If we're doing it for, you know, to enrich and enhance the educational experiences of kids from Bridgeport, then that's one thing. But if we're taking them for the money, I'm not on board.
Um, before I give it to Ms. Guernsey, I, that's part of the discussion for me, and I've spoken um, at the board table and as a member of the public. My children went to Dwight, and that has always been a school that has had a, you know, a larger open choice enrollment. And I think it enriches the learning experience of all students, those coming from Bridgeport, as well as those students here, that it just brings different points of view and increases the dialogue among students. And as we're talking about having students that are going to be participants in a world economy and in a world, um, I think that providing that diversity is, you know, provides a educational service. So it's not, I'm sorry if it sounded like it was just about the money, because it's not, but it it is a factor that needs to be also considered and talked about. So with that, I'll bring it to Ms. Guernsey. Thank you, Ms. Asa.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Um, I actually was um, going to say um, exactly what you just said, and I really, um, based on my own students, uh, my own children's uh, experience, meeting other children in the open choice program, I just think that it brings enormous value to our schools and I'm I'm a supporter of the program. I'm I'm kind of conflicted about this specific situation because, um, I mean, I I think we're still, we're still in a crisis, so um, it it really concerns me that that we're talking about this right now, and I think the focus has to be on our own own students. That being said, I I also don't have a clear understanding of of the revenue that's generated really by any of this, and I know um, it kind of just disappeared, like, where did it go? In my chat, um, Ms. Canelli had um, posted further information about the um, criteria for receiving the $6,000 and, you know, if we're talking about what numbers would be acceptable, I mean, I might say anywhere between 0 and 35. Uh, because, you know, I'm I'm thinking, you know, if we're trying to get to 50% of an increase, you know, if that's 35 and it gets us to $6,000, maybe that's a good idea. Maybe it's not. I don't know. Um, but I think there are just so many questions we have about our own students. I mean, we also, I don't know if we've taken a careful look at the students that are currently either at home studying or at private schools, and if they're planning to come back next year, is that going to impact our enrollment at different levels? Um, just so many questions. I'm really concerned about uh, how thinly we're stretched right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. Ms. Picko, followed by Ms. Jacobson.
I I probably should have talked before because I, first, I want to say thank you to Dr. Parrish. That was a lot of work to do, to put together for us. Um, I really think we should be having this conversation in November, when the budget is first being put together. But the part that I wanted to add it was, in all the conversations that I had with CES, one of the questions that kept coming up, and I'm I'm trying to find the answer, you know, crack gives an additional 20 to $22,000 per student, and I'm realistic. It costs a lot more than $3,000 to educate a student. I I really believe that um, we need to look regionally at adding students in Trumbull, in in Easton, and there needs to be more of a push to help financially do this. Because we're in a very precarious situation right now, where we're getting caught by $2 million, and I know that this is not about money, but at the end of the day, we really have to think about that next month, when we're looking at how we're going to educate our students for next year. That's my two cents.
Ms. Jacobson, followed by Mrs. Max and Canelli.
Uh, Mrs. Munsell, I have a quick question for you, if that's okay? Um, the special ed reimbursement, that's not 100%, right? That's after the grant is subtracted, correct?
Right, that's 100% above and beyond the $3,000 amount we receive from the state.
Isn't it minus the grant amount, though, first?
Well, yeah, same thing.
Okay, so it's 100% minus. Okay. Um, you know, I think that it's a little unfortunate that we, you know, I don't know if CES just told us about this, that we were due, um, and and we seem to be under a bit of a fire. Um, I do want to ask a question, you know, we, in in the past and historically, open trace has come in in elementary school, um, not necessarily coming in in middle school and high school, and I know that that was done under the previous administration for, I think, the very first time. Um, and I don't know if these are answers that, Mr. Cummings, you have right now, but I would like to have an idea of um, how that went.
Um, I have anecdotal information. You're right. It began under Dr. Jones, um, placement in the secondary level. Uh, I have anecdotal information on this. This is a year old, but I remember a year ago or so, well, it was it was probably in the fall of 2019, asking about this. Um, anecdotally, our our open choice students are very successful in the Fairfield Public Schools. Um, you know, we, they, they um, they do very well here. Our students have done very well here. Um, I think, particularly as students get older, um, they have the ability, as Dr. Parrish mentioned, they have the ability to to opt out of the program themselves. Um, it's rare that we actually have a student opt back out. Um, we have had, you know, we, they have a long bus ride, and sometimes in elementary school, we've had discipline issues on those buses. Um, but nothing that has not been able to be handled by our administrators, and certainly nothing that's been extraordinary. Um, there was one circumstance, I believe in my four or five years ago, where um, Bridgeport had to um, support the bus ride with a paraprofessional at their expense.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, I wasn't meant to get into like discipline. I meant more like academically. Academic profanity. Yeah, go ahead.
No, academically, as I said, I I'm just trying to enumerate what the issues are, because these are the issues that that come up. And I I think that overall, the program has um, been very successful on on both for our students in Fairfield and for the students coming through the open choice program.
Okay, so your answer is, is that transitioning in the upper grades has not been a problem?
Not been a problem.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, that's, that was, sorry, Christine, that was just one of the question I wanted to ask.
So, Mrs. Max Canelli? You had your hand up?
Yes, um, thank you. It's, um, so I I and I did stick it in the chat. I'm happy to, if anyone is listening to this meeting and wants to know what I put in the chat, I'm happy to send it to them. Um, but in fact, Mrs. Vitale is correct. Uh, based on what I was reading, that it becomes $6,000 per student. If you can show that in a, if you are a district with an enrollment of greater than 4,000 students, if your open choice population increases by 50%, it's 6,000 students, which means if we take in 35 students at a minimum, that's $630,000. And unless someone can explain how that is incorrect, I I I respect Mrs. Jacobson enormously. I have no problem with saying that I would be interested in this for the money. There are districts upstate that have hacks, and and Mrs. Picko referenced this also, that do a tremendous boost to their school budgets by supporting the Hartford Open Choice Program. And I don't consider this to be an issue of morality. I think Fairfield Public Schools has something outstanding to offer that will be life changing for these students, and I don't mind saying that. And if, I apologize if someone wants, I'm not deeming this white saviorism either. Um, because as, and I forget if it was Mr. Asa who said this, it's not, it is absolutely not necessarily students of color who will be taking advantage of this. Um, these are Bridgeport students who are looking for an opportunity that we have something to offer, and they enrich our experience, and it is also financially something that how could we not fully contemplate this when we're looking at one and a half to $2 million to need to cut? I mean, look at the wrestling we had to do to try to get back some art instruction in our elementary schools. I mean, we've got a lot that's at the bone here, and this is something which is a win, win, win in so many categories, and I actually take very much to heart what Mr. Cummings said, which is that with these students spread out in the manner that they are, they will very much be caught up in the measures that we are putting into place for all of our students. And if I really want to come at this from a financial point of view, I actually wasn't as hesitant about the 95, Mr. Cummings, just to give you my feedback. But if I want to be really mercenary about this, I would be interested in 35 this year, which brings us to 105, and then we add another 55 the following year to take a two year advantage of the $6,000. To be honest with you, I mean, that that's real money. That would be um, not inconsiderable. And, you know, in this, in the, following along with the theme of monetizing our assets, we have a tremendous asset, and it enriches our. we have a tremendous asset, and it enriches our student population and our students' experience. I just think this is a tremendous win.
Thank you, Mrs. Maxine Cannelli. Ms. Pitco?
So when I first started talking about this, I don't know if I was clear. We are not being offered the $4,000. Before any district had ever made a decision about how many Open Choice students they were going to add, we were actually one of the few districts in Fairfield County that was not offered any increase. And once again, I sent that information to Mr. Cummings and Mrs. Vitale, so.
I apologize.
Now in the CES, who they gave it to, who they offered it to.
Ms. Pitco, I don't recall getting that information from you. I apologize, maybe you sent it to Mr.
It was a while ago. Remember, I said, oh, I was going to talk about it at the last meeting. I'll send it again.
Yeah, I have it open right now in front of me. It was sent, Ms. Pitco, I think you sent it April 1st. And I'm looking at that, and there's a PDF here, which I can get out to the board, but essentially it kind of the Q and A around Open Choice. And it's from CES, it's provided by CES. And it doesn't, what it talks about here in the money, it doesn't say.
So there should have been two emails, just so you know.
Okay, it doesn't say specifically that money was offered to those districts. It does say that, let me just find it, that currently there are 26 districts that are reimbursed at the 3,000 student rate, seven at the 4,000 student rate, and four at the 6,000 student rate, and 10 at the.
That's not the email I'm referring to.
Okay.
This was a specific incentive that was sent out through, from the state, through CES with the towns listed of who could increase to $4,000 and Fairfield was not listed.
Was that with the new program through Norwalk?
There was one on the list, but I don't know who else is on there.
Yeah, because.
Like I said, I sent the email a while ago, but I did follow up recently when I found out our finance committee was going to be talking about this.
Ms. Jacobson?
Definitely something you need to know and answer before you make any decision by Friday anyway. Because I kept inquiring, and I let you guys know that I was inquiring on why we were not included in that 4,000.
Ms. Pitco, I'm sorry, I didn't, don't recall getting that email from you. I would have followed up, but thank you. If you could forward to me again, I appreciate it.
It's two emails, just so you know.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jacobson?
Thanks, Mrs. Vitale. So, you know, the funding from the state for Open Choice has been significantly reduced in recent years. So I want to confirm one thing, that CES doesn't place students in any district, ours or otherwise, unless the funding is available, correct? Whoever can answer that question.
Yeah, we'll double check that, but I'm pretty sure that is correct. They will not do that without the funding available.
The state has reduced the amount so much, but I just, it isn't within available appropriation. So that would be something that I'd want to have.
There are times, Ms. Jacobson, where districts have, I remember doing this myself, offering more spots than they actually filled because of that issue.
Wait, repeat that again, sorry.
Yeah, a district would offer, say, 50 spots, but they would only fill 30 because of the funding.
Because of the funding didn't follow. Okay, okay. I think that, you know, again, I feel like this is a little bit of a fire. Is there any way that we could get a better analysis? So we're not kind of doing these back-of-the-napkin things for different scenarios possibly, Mike? In short order, if possible, that is confirmed and accurate. You know, broke it up in maybe a couple of different ways. But I think that this is, seems to be a bit of a hurried conversation and some lingering questions around that. So if that's possible, that would be great. I know that, Mrs. Vitale, you've asked for a sense of the body right now because Mr. Cummings needs to give an answer. We don't need to give an answer tomorrow. And, you know, it is a very incredibly important conversation for us in our districts and should be conscious about it. And, you know, as you've asked for a sense of the body, I do, I mean, obviously, if you don't want to speak, you don't want to speak. But I do want to hear from all of my colleagues on this board about this. You know, and unless you don't really have anything to say, then I respect that. But she did, you know, the chair did ask for a sense of the body. So if you have anything, I would appreciate hearing it. Thank you.
Ms. Vitale?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, for the purposes of feedback and to get a sense of the body, I agree with Ms. Jacobson and Mr. Asa. I think that 130% increase at this time, with all the challenges that we're facing, is too much. So, you know, not to be repetitive of everything that was already said, but that's where I am.
Thank you, Mrs. Vitale. Mr. Peterson?
All right, thank you. I have a kind of complicated view of all this. I may not have mentioned it before, but I went to school in Fairfield. But what I don't often talk about is the fact that when I was in kindergarten, my family lived in Bridgeport. And I went to Bridgeport, to Nathan Hale School in Bridgeport for kindergarten. And a signal event in my life was the death of my great-grandmother, who left us her little house on Stilson Road and gave us an opportunity for my parents, who were living on a third-floor walk-up, my dad going to night school, my mother stayed home, to move to Fairfield. They had tried to get back to the town that they were born in, and they couldn't afford it. Even in 1975, it was beyond their means. And this event changed the trajectory of my life. I can't understate the degree to which I think that's true. I got a fantastic education in Fairfield Schools. Now, you know, Mr. Asa is right. Like, this is not something that we're going to solve racial balance with. The numbers don't work. This is not something that I think, I agree that we can't ignore the revenue possibilities of it. I wish they were higher, I wish they were more attractive, but that's not going to solve the problem either. So why are we doing it? I think we're doing it because of the, of the good that it's going to do for our, for our students, for our student body. And I think it's, we can also throw in the good that it's going to do for students from Bridgeport. I think that in some ways, look, it's a complicated issue. We can't ignore all the other things. But why otherwise are we doing it? If not to change the trajectory of students' lives from Bridgeport and from Fairfield? Now, all that said, when I first heard in finance committee that we were considering a triple-digit increase to this program, it gave me pause. You know, my vision about this has always been, I wanted to do redistricting first. I had a very clear idea how all this was going to work, was, you know, we were going to do redistricting, we were going to get the lumpiness out of the, you know, the admission patterns in town. And we were going to find open seats, and then we would be able to fill them. And it was, it was so simple in my mind. And obviously, you know, when the rubber hits the road and the COVID hits our shores, and things like that go out the window. But I would support a sizable increase this year, knowing that it is a variable, knowing that, you know, we, you know, and cognizant of the fact that, you know, Dr. Parrish and Mr. Cummings have taken care to make sure that we're trying as best we can to not increase the number of sections. You know, to not, not make a large FTE pressure. I don't know that I'm in favor of 95, but like, like the, you know, the 50% increase or the, you know, the $6,000 or a 50% increase, like, that's, that's very attractive to me if that's, if that's the way the math works. But I can't, I can't get beyond the moral issue of it. And that's, and that's where I am with that. I, I, I get the financial issue. I get the complicated resource stress issue. I get all that. I just, I think it's time for a big increase.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, well, just since I was asked, and I don't want to disappoint Mrs. Jacobson, I, I, the 95, increase of 95 makes me uncomfortable, particularly in a year like this year. I would really like to get some definitive clarification on that 6,000 number, on the 50%, if that is in fact true. If we did increase by 35 or 36, whatever that number needs to be, if that did provide the 6,000, I think that would be helpful. I do think that there is a lot that this program brings, as many have said before me. And I don't think that can be ignored, even in, or hopefully near the end of dealing with a pandemic. Students in Bridgeport have been dealing with it as well, and they've had a lot more difficulties than we have in many ways. So I do think that it's important to get more detail about that increase. And I am in favor of increasing to an extent, but I would be very uncomfortable with the 95.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Ms. Pitco?
I just have a question for Mrs. Munsell. Would, so Bridgeport is slated to get federal funds, just like us, except they're getting exponentially more, correct? Would we get any of the federal funds for the 95 or 35 students if they came here?
No, I don't believe so. That's not the basis of it.
Yeah, that's right. That funding already has been determined. That funding source has already been determined based on their current enrollments. It would, it's based on their, I think, last year's student enrollment, not even this year's.
So it would, it would be just the grant, whatever the grant amount is, and the half a student being factored in when calculating the ECS formula in terms of revenue to the district. So what I'm hearing, it sounds like 95, there's not support of the board for taking that level of increase from the majority of the board. There is a level of increase of interest, and if the 6,000 per pupil comes to fruition, and that's 35 students, that would be more palatable. I know I would be supportive of that. It sounds like Mrs. Maxine Cannelli would be supportive of that, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Guernsey. I think that if we could get some more clarification on that this week and get that out to the board, that might help inform your decision-making. Does that sound like a plan for you, Mr. Cummings, in terms of getting you more information?
Yeah, when I hear the question, then I just, I'm going to repeat this back to you, Ms. Vitale, just to be clear. It goes back to what Ms. Jacobson originally asked as a question, too. I just want to make sure we're getting it right. Is essentially the question being that if, if we're reading the statute right, if we increase our capacity, our enrollment of Open Choice students by 50%, which would be 35, 36 students, would we then increase the revenue per student from $3,000 to $6,000? That's the question.
For that first year?
Yeah, that first year.
For that first year? That is the question. I think that we need to get just clarification on that. Mr. Asa?
Tomorrow, absolutely.
Yeah, so just to clarify, I'm interested in that, too, because this work, we're in essence potentially creating our own cliff then. So 6,000 for the first year, and then it goes back to 3,000, correct?
Then it would go back to 3,000. But depending on, as Miss, you know, looking forward to Miss Maxine Cannelli's point, which, you know, if you're comfortable adding potentially 100 more students over the course of a few years, try to maximize and get that 6,000. We, you know, we are potentially creating a cliff, Mr. Asa, but right now, we're, we're, in some respects, have a $2 million cliff imposed on us by this reduction. I mean, we're going to be reducing in areas that we're going to need to make up next year. So to Miss, you know, Pitco's point about, you know, we have a lot of needs, and if this will help, this revenue will help for this year as we've identified all these needs for these students, then I think that we should take it, is my personal opinion. That's my sense. If it really ends up being $6,000 per student, 35 students, spread across a district of over 9,000, and the superintendent is comfortable with that, I would be supportive of that. Ms. Pitco?
So let me just be clarified. He needs to give CES a decision by Friday, but we're not voting, and it has a financial impact?
We are not voting, but we have not voted, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Jacob, Mrs. Maxine Cannelli, Ms. Gerber, I don't think that we have voted on the number of Open Choice students we take. I mean, that really has been.
Yes, we have.
No, I don't think we have.
No.
On our racial imbalance plan, we've discussed it, we've agreed on the racial imbalance plan. That was our vote.
Right, and that says that we should be at 100 students right now. So if we take the 35 that we're talking about to get to the 6,000, that pretty much shows a good faith effort that we are at least trying to meet that aspect of our plan, which is another.
Okay, but this has a financial impact. Don't we vote on matters that have a financial impact?
We vote on, we do vote on the budget. But just for past practice, we have not voted on the number of Open Choice students that we take aside from the racial imbalance plan, which right now is at 100. So I think we've already voted on that in terms of what the number should be. And right now, we're under that number. But in the past, the number has been set after the budget has been, has been moved forward, going the way, you know, has it been in the past.
Well, listen, I am not uncomfortable making that decision. But if the other board members don't want to vote on this, there's nothing I can do about it. I personally voted on a racial imbalance plan, would put a number in. This has a financial impact. I am not comfortable moving forward unless we vote on this. I don't want to tell CES a number. It just seems irresponsible to me to not have a vote.
Ms. Pitco, right now, our number is 100. Are you comfortable going to 100? That is the number that we.
And this current, what we are facing this year, I am not comfortable adding any more students after we just told an entire district that we can't spend money on RLA Academy, that we can't spend money on a math academy, but we're going to take in students from another district at below the per pupil tuition cost. Like, I just can't in good faith do that. But if, if you're not going to vote and you're going to move forward, there's nothing I can do about it.
Okay, Ms. Pitco, thank you for sharing that.
I'm just, can I just say one thing here, Ms. Vitale?
You can, Ms. Asa.
I just, I think that, I agree to a point with, with Ms. Pitco. I also understand the 100 thing. But this just shows this conversation how controversial this is. And I just, to me, I just think it, it just proves that at this point, until we have our ducks in a row, we need to keep the status quo. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. I did not put this on the agenda as a voting item, really, just because of past practice and that we do have a number that we, as, well, not this board, but a plan that shoots for 100. And in the past, the decision was made in the spring when we had a better idea of enrollment. I absolutely hear the board's concerns about, you know, not knowing what next year is going to look like. But we are not voting on this right now. And if the, if the consensus is zero, the consensus could be zero. Or we can add an agenda item right now to vote, but I don't think that would really be in the best practice either. So I think that, you know, for now, until we get more clarification on the 6,000, I think that we've kind of reached the end of this. We know where everybody stands, and we'll move forward. And once we get that information, you know, if we think that we need to hold an emergency meeting to vote later in the week, and then that's maybe what we can do. week, and then that's maybe what we can do, if we want to move forward. Because I, I don't want to minimize Ms. Picko's concerns. I do respect the concerns that you were saying in terms of this. But I think the fact that it is potentially an income, it does add income to the district, is probably why it was not a voting item in the past. Any last comments on this before I move forward? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. I'm sorry, Mr. Cummings.
Yeah, can I just, I feel the need to say a couple things. I apologize in advance. First, to the racial imbalance plan, that's a commitment we made to the state. So that's not something we can, we can, you know, as Ms. Vitale said, they've not had time to have this business with us, but I fully expect that come September, on their timeline, we'll be back up there again. And while we know that it's not expected to deliver the goods on, and it's, it's not going to be enough, open choice enrollment is not going to be enough to deliver the change that this district needs to address the racial imbalance, it's still part of an accepted plan with the state that we've had to go for years to the state to, to defend and argue for, and to build support among the members of the State Board of Education. So I take that commitment to them as I, as I know board leadership who's sat with me in that room does very seriously. Whether we agree with the law or not, that, that is a commitment being made. Secondly, I don't, I, I want to make sure that it's understood by anybody listening that while we're talking about the money, our, our objective from the educational point of view is the benefit this brings to the students both in Fairfield and from Bridgeport. I, I think Mr. Peterson's very poignant remarks speak to that. But again, our, the students who have come in the open choice program and their families are fully committed to the opportunity that Fairfield Public Schools offer them. I think as a district, we have work to do to become more welcoming to those families. I will, I say that based on the experiences and correspondence I've had with some of those families. We can only make the experience better. Let me say that. My final point would be this. We, we brought this forward to the board as Dr. Jones did in the past, Dr. Title did in the past, for board consideration and for board input, because we've been asked over the years to, to certainly, to to gather input from board members as representatives of the community, knowing that, on many topics, but knowing that this one in particular has, has generated concerns in the past from, from other, other elected officials in town and families. And there's people who stand on both sides of this issue. I, I certainly understand that. We also brought it forward because we have been charged with finding, finding ways to support the budget going forward and to increase our capacity to develop a program to support all of our students. So part of that is, it, it's two issues, as the board well knows. It's both reducing costs when we can and then increasing revenue when we can. And the opportunity here is, and we will clarify this, is that we can increase revenue for a year, and we should do that. We should do that any opportunity we get, particularly if it's in the service of something good like this. But I will tell you that it bothers me to no end that this now becomes a voting item when we brought, I could have kept my mouth shut and not brought this forward, quite honestly. And, and, and we could have just done it, but I wouldn't do that out of, out of respect for the board and, and its position it holds. Now we have to go through and, and, I, I'm sorry, it's just the amount of turmoil this creates, and honestly, I will tell you, I don't think it reflects well on the board that this becomes a voting item. The administrators need their right and the ability to manage the district as they see right. I certainly accept the board's input and, and seek it out. But not everything can be voted on. And we should be entrusted to make these decisions for what's best for the school system, given all the factors I just mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. I, I agree with you, quite honestly, which is why I didn't put it on as a voting item on this agenda. We'll wait for the information on the funding. I think that this board, you know, needs to look at it for all the reasons that we discussed tonight. For the value that it brings to our students, to the value it brings to the students from Bridgeport, for the potential positive budget implications that it has for our budget, potentially for the town budget, and because we have a racial imbalance plan that has a hundred students that we have intentionally not met. Now, this past year for the pandemic, there was a good reason for it. Moving forward, I, I don't think we have as good of a reason. And I am not really looking forward to sitting in front of the commissioner, if I am the board chair at that particular time, and explaining why we did not even try, really, to, to, to do what we said we were going to do. I was not at all implying that I thought that taking these students was going to solve the racial imbalance, but it would basically put us in compliance with the plan that we put forth. So we'll await that information and take it from there.
We will get to that information as soon as we have it.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Okay, moving on, approval of policy fifty-one thirteen, students attendance excuses dismissal. That the Board of Education approved policy fifty-one thirteen, students attendance excuses dismissal. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Maxine Canelli, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Maxine Canelli, you want to talk us through this?
Sure, and unfortunately, I closed the tab orders, so I don't have the exact language in front of me, but having just read it again, I just want to let the board know where this was coming from. This was initially part of the discussion that led to the policy on the, yes, the vote on this exact same policy at our last meeting. And this specific language, Dr. Parrish needed to have an extra meeting to look at because of some tweaking that needed to be done and some checking of demographics and what would be readily available. And so that's why this came back to our policy meeting was after that bit of research. The idea of the genesis of this comes from the notion that while we are looking, and again, I, I do want to remind everybody that this would not be a COVID policy, reminder that all of those COVID policies expire June thirtieth automatically. This would become a permanent change to the policy as it is right now. And the idea was that when we make a report, and again, just going to use easy round numbers, that the Fairfield District is reporting a ninety-five percent attendance rate, and that immediately would allay concerns. Our kids are in, we're in good shape. And the concern was that we really wanted, as, as a policy committee, we really wanted to make sure that, and I'm going to describe it as it's the attendance version of the estimate gap, that these demographic groups didn't get lost, that while perhaps the majority of our students were attending school and, and, you know, were in such strong numbers that we had that ninety-five percent attendance rate to report, that could very well be disguising what was a greater issue in these demographic areas. And not that I'm, you know, this is not to say that this would not have been on the staff's radar regardless, but that was, you know, our source for wanting this to be, to put consideration, put before the board for consideration where that came from. And happy to take any questions.
Any questions for the policy committee? Mr. Tally?
Hi, thanks. I understand kind of why this came up, and then I don't for sped. And really, when I read this, I would assume in most cases, for students who are chronically absent, sped is involved in one way, shape, or form, because it's already become sort of a severe problem for a child. And usually those children have teams that are working on being chronically absent and getting them back in. So I'm not sure I understand creating another team to sort of oversee those teams. It all feels a bit redundant to me. So, you know, I'm not sort of inclined to support this. But I do appreciate, I did sort of go back and forth with Ms. Jacobson and Ms. Jen, Ms. Maxine Canelli, just trying to get some clarification on it. But it still makes me uncomfortable, so for that reason, I probably will not be supporting this policy.
And just speaking to that, you know, and, and again, I did appreciate the conversation that I had with Ms. Vitale, understanding the concerns. Two things with that, I think it's one thing to know that we have a student that is well supported by a team. It's another thing to have at, at the district level of being aware that this is become, you know, if it has triggered that ten percent, and that it is an issue and, and is to such a substantial degree among a subgroup, it's worth it to have that awareness. You know, I can, I can picture a discussion down the road of, we're looking at academic achievement numbers, and if we are looking at, because we certainly will look, for example, at the sped achievement academic numbers, and if it's in a year where we can also say, well, but we're also reporting demographic absentee numbers that's of a significant level. I can picture a future board saying, what are we doing about that? What has the district done about that? And if, if, if we didn't have, you know, if, for example, we made an amendment to just strip out the sped component to this, well, then why isn't it in it? And, and I, I completely agree with you, Ms. Vitale. We have busy administrators, support staff and teachers. The last thing I want to do is build in redundancy. And, and the students who should, and the, the team that can best serve that student is the team that knows that student, and not just that student, but that family. So my vision of this, and, and Mr. Cummings can correct me if I'm wrong, my vision for this would be that if it has come to the point that it's triggered at the district level or school level, that that entire subgroup has tripped the ten percent, has tripped the policy, that team could very likely be satisfied quickly that, no, we've got a handle on it and we're working on it. It doesn't imply that, that, that there's going to be any resting of control, resting of authority from the team that knows that student best. It's, we're working on it, we've got it, and now we have, and we can say, it, it's more than checking a box, but it certainly is going to be in the position of saying, we are aware of it and we are working on it.
I, I mean, I, I guess I, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I guess I underst, I understand what you're saying, except when I read this, it describes the, you know, the membership of the attendance review teams, and it pretty much lists everybody who would be on a sped team anyway. So we're, we would essentially, I feel like, be creating a team that's already the team that's working with the chronically absent student and family. And although it does say in here that also the chronically absent child and, and the guardians or parents of the chronically absent child could be part of the attendance review teams, and, and it goes into, you know, what's, who's responsible, the review team should be responsible for reviewing, reviewing cases of the truance. I can't stand that word in this policy. I know that's not you, Ms. Maxine Canelli. That's the state statute, but, and chronically absent children discussing school interventions and community referrals. While I appreciate that that's put in there for what the teams should do, it's already existing in the team for the sped children, so I get it. It is redundant. So I don't know, maybe Mr. Mancusi can speak to this, his thoughts on it?
Sure, I could give you my thoughts. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. First of all, any student who has absentee issues, chronic absentee issues, particularly under the IDEA, is required to be brought to a PPT to see if there's any underlying suspected disability that is related to, or may be related to, the chronic absenteeism. For students who are already in special education, they currently have a team to support them. I actually think and support the idea of a school-based team that oversees the attendance of its building. I don't see that team, excuse me, I don't see an, a, a school-based team to monitor absenteeism of students with disabilities or students without disabilities, in the particular case of special ed, in any way replacing that PPT support team around the student. That team may be just able to, you know, communicate with the case manager, something that the case manager may have missed if there's ongoing attendance issue. But I totally agree, Bonnie, with you. I don't think it's another team of professionals that we need to introduce to an already existing team, PPT team that's already supporting the student and family. But I, I do, I do support the idea of having a school or district level team that monitors support, that don't necessarily have to intervene with a student with disabilities, but it's information that will be, you know, you know will be monitored closely, and then the PPT team can respond accordingly. But our obligation under the IDEA is, still remains with or without this policy about going to PPT for students who have significant attendance issues.
Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, and, and Mrs. Vitale, I hear what you're saying as well because of some of the language perhaps, but that this already is existing policy, this already exists. All we're doing is expanding what might cause, you know, the team to become engaged on a school-wide or district level. And just to the point of what Mrs. Maxine Canelli said, that under existing policy, in the instances that are examples that were given, that we do have, our policy does not capture that at the time. So therefore, we do not trigger a district or school building level attendance team at, sorry, am I, am I echoing? Sorry, I heard that. So what this policy is really trying to do is to just expand what already is to ensure that in the instances where there are subgroup populations that are not, you know, that I would call hidden or, or not seen in the overall group that we do as a, as a board have in this policy, that we are focused on that as well, and not just the whole group. So it wasn't meant to be an additional team. It's what already exists. It's just how we're going to trigger that going forward if and when necessary. So, and again, it's the operationalization of that is, like Mr. Mancusi said, at the building or district level, and wouldn't necess, that's up to them how they do that, and it wouldn't necessarily be any type of a new team. So, and I'm sorry if, you know, that wasn't clear in the way that it was written.
Mrs. Vitale, I'm sorry. Can I, can I add one more point, Mrs. Vitale? Vitale, I, I just, I look at this as another set of eyes at, at a, at a broader building level to monitor the attendance of students. So we don't have students that are falling through the cracks, and, and then it, it's just another set of colleagues that could be, you know, be, communicate with, with the school-based team who's working with the student. It, it also, it would not be, there's many districts who already have district level and building level attendance teams. So it wouldn't replace the PPT in any shape, way, or form. It wouldn't be an addition. It, it just would really add to the building level responsibility to monitor the attendance of all of its students.
Mr. Vitale, any other follow-up? Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it to the vote. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Ms. Maxine Canelli, Mr. Asa, Ms. Picko, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Vitale, all opposed? Ms. Vitale, motion carries eight-one. Ms. Guernsey, did I say your name? If not, Ms. Guernsey voted in favor. Thank you. Okay, moving on, approval of the minutes. The Board of Education approved the March ninth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Mrs. Gerber, seconded in Mrs. Gerber seconded by Mr. Asa. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries nine-zero. Superintendent's report, Mr. Cummings?
Thank you, I apologize, I just was taking notes on the follow-up now, we have to get this, want to, um, distribute the policy to the administrator teams and talk about how we can, um, operationalize it quickly. I, I just want to add, I, I didn't want to further the conversation specific on the policy, but I, I do think that this is a, I appreciate very much that the Policy Committee members brought this policy forward. I think it will do a very good job of identifying, helping us to prioritize this as a data point to, to, to review, keep in our sights. We'll look to, um, to Mr. Rattelli's concerns, um, we'll look to ways to, um, make this part of our, um, data, accessibility of data to our leadership teams in the schools. So this, this won't be something that I'll have to hunt and search for, that this will be something that they can look at on a daily basis and, and monitor to respond. So we can, we can make that work pretty quickly. Just a few things I'm going to ask, um, Mr. Papa George to speak in a minute, but I, I wanted to talk about, um, the kind of conflict, what I think people are seeing is conflicting guidance coming from both the Department of Public Health and then the governor's announcement yesterday. And i- i- if it's not apparent to everybody at, to, to this point, th- this is another example that the state is essentially operating on two sets of rules. There's the rules that everybody else has to follow, then the rules that the schools must follow. So on the DPH call this morning, one of the superintendents explicitly asked how we reconcile the Finnish Strong document, which I've shared with board members and is available on our website, with the governor's, um, you know, announcement yesterday about the May first and the May seventeenth deadline, uh, nineteenth deadline. Um, and how he's, you know, essentially for outdoor spaces by, uh, the middle of May, other than masks, all the other guidance is essentially going away. Um, and in the words of the, uh, one of the DPH representatives, um, Mr. Dr. St. Louis today, he said that, uh, essentially what the schools need to do is, is follow the Finnish Strong document, which is the should, his words here, the should document. And everybody else is following the can. Document, which is what the governor is saying. So what the governor is allowing are not things that we're not, we're going to be able necessarily to do in the schools. I think some of that, and this is, these are suppositions on my part, this wasn't gotten into. I think some of that is certainly based on the vaccination, uh, levels of not just our sixteen, eighteen-year-olds, but certainly the students who are younger than that, particularly given the concerns of transmission now among the, um, younger students, um, with the variants. Um, but that, that's kind of the guidance we're operating under. So given that, we are, um, meeting tomorrow. We'll meet again with, uh, Mr. Cleary and Ms. Mitchell from the Health Department. We have some, I, I met with our high school principals today, uh, to get a couple of scenarios from them, which they're going to generate. So we're going to try to think about, um, uh, how we're, how we can, um, best make things happen for things like, um, Mr. Atsis shared with us, for example, the battle of the houses at Ludlow. How we can hold that outside, how we can make that work with three hundred and fifty seniors, for example. How we're going to be able to address prom. Uh, you know, and how, how, uh, holding a prom outside in the courtyard, or on the front lawn at Fairfield Ludlow, uh, Courtyard Award, front lawn at Fairfield Ludlow can be done in a safe manner and best, uh, meets student expectations of what a prom should be. Um, these are the things that we're going to be working on, given the guidance that we've received and the questions. I want to be clear that the, the high school principals are truly advocating for what they, the best possible situation for students. Um, and, and our work with the Health Department is going to be to see how we can make those types of things happen. But we still are very much bound. I'll give you the example this superintendent gave online today during the DPH call. His, his, uh, senior class can all go to a yard goats game up at Hartford, sit right next to each other and not, not, you know, if they're vaccinated, not wear masks. But when they come back to school, they've got to wear masks, they've got to maintain social distancing, they got to have perhaps two or three seedings at the prom. The, the rules just don't. They're not, they're not. Um, there's just two different sets of rules, and that's what we're struggling with right now. So I understand I've gotten some questions from parents around this. I, I just want people to know that we're going to work through this over the next, uh, few weeks to try to get this, um, well, it's quickly, so I don't even want to say next couple of weeks, to work through to get this solved as quickly as possible. So I don't know if there's questions on that, as soon as Jacobson's in, but I, if there's questions on that, before I talk about a couple of other things.
Um, thank you. Um, did the commissioner happen to say, you know, that when you guys expressed your, you know, the discrepancy between these rules, did she say that she was going to be issuing any guidance that reconciled any of this so that, you know, some of these more bigger milestone events can occur? More in alignment with what the can is versus the should towards the end of the year or something, or maybe the last day? Or just was there any recognition on her part of this discrepancy situation?
There was, there was certainly recognition of the discrepancy, but there wasn't a, uh, a, a plan going forward to resolve it. Um, I think, I think there is some, I mean, even in, even the, what's got lost in even the governor's statement yesterday was his, uh, the, he did say something about the metrics all going in the right direction. Um, but of course he didn't decide, define what those metrics were or what direction, you know, what, what that necessarily looked like. But no, there was really no effort, Ms. Jacobson, to, um, to help resolve the issue. It's kind of, we have to, at this point, anyway, we're living with a discrepancy and, and trying to figure out the best way to work, like you said, with the Health Department, um, and, and, uh, even with our prams, with the, um, Emergency Operations Command in town to make those happen as safely as possible. But, you know, I, we, we look at this, we have, we have, you know, each of our high school lunch waves. Um, you know, now granted, we don't, we don't have, you know, roughly right now, three hundred kids in each of our high schools, but, so each of those lunch, lunch waves has, well, over three hundred students in them. Um, you know, they're eating together. It's not dissimilar from a single serving, uh, sitting at a prom. So we're trying to think about analogous situations that happen in school that we could extend to these events. And, and again, we're going to work on it.
Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Yeah, i- is there anything that anybody can do to help Mr. Cummings? No, it's, I'm serious, you know?
I know, I know you are, I apologize.
Oh, I, I don't blame you for laughing, but you tell me what squeaky wheel to start rolling and it wouldn't be hard to generate an awful lot of noise here, whether it's to, you know, who in the state, who where? Because it, again, we, we, we've obeyed a tremendous amount and we could explain the rationale. And even when there was competing science, there was something to point to, but your example, thank you for, so thank you for giving them, because it really helps only crystallize just a vague feeling on my part. But you're so correct that there, the logic is now just lost. Um, it, the, the caring is still there, I would expect that, but it's just, I, I mean, one parent said this to me and I've not been able to shake it. We are coming up with these rules for these kids because we can. Not because it's so, supported by science, not because it's fair. It's not being employed anywhere else in our community. We're do- and, and I don't mean we, meaning Fairfield Leadership, I mean, the state, we're doing it to them just because we have the power to do it. And how reprehensible is that? So my first question is sincerely, in a well-thought-out manner, is there someone whom it would benefit a change in policy if there was communication? And the second part, if a change of heart were to happen at the state level, what will it take with EOC? Will they be immediately on board or is that now a sticking point? So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, our EOC has done a very good job of, of following the sector rules, and I appreciate you asking, uh, Ms. Max, I, I apologize for my initial response, it's, this, this, you feel like you're in a, um, you know, a real truly catch-twenty-two situation, of course, this has been all year, but particularly lately. Um, I, I want to be, I want to be really clear, because I think that the DPH is on the side of what's, they're trying to keep people safe. And, and to your, to I think that parent's point, to some degree, they can do more with the schools. It's just populations in a sense that are under control, and the governor can go, does go out and change the rules for. I will say, and I'm not quite sure what this meant, um, but there was conversation today, um, that, um, the executive orders are going to, I think, la- lapse in, in coming weeks. And there might be conversation at the, with the General Assembly on their kind of taking up the charge of those executive orders. In other words, the, the ability, from what I understand from the conversation today, the, um, the governing authority of this, and essentially will transfer from the executive branch to the legislative branch. And so there may be opportunity in coming weeks to, to work with our state delegation around some of these issues. Because that's, that, that ultimately would be a change factor.
Right, um, I'm not sure in time for senior prom.
No.
Not, as I have, while I have a great deal of faith in the responsiveness of the Fairfield delegation, I do not have faith in the legislative body of the state of Connecticut to accomplish anything of immediate interest.
One of the things that just people know, that, uh, prams are looking at the, um, one of the, uh, pieces of advice that DPH has is, you know, just from a logistical point of view, um, prom should happen, take place, um, eleven days essentially prior to graduation, so that if there was an incident where there had to be quarantining as a result of a prom, students would not have to then miss graduation. So that's per, part of our planning as well, just as a side note that we're looking at. So that, that means a prom would probably happen, you know, I think that first weekend in June, end of May type of thing. But I will, I will look into this, I will see what, um, you know, as I said, I'm meeting with the Health Department tomorrow. I can certainly ask them that question as well.
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, um, sorry, Mike, we, you know, uh, it's, there's a short timeframe, so, um, you know, in terms of planning and everything like that. So do we have any type of timeline that you're hoping to be able to tell these kids whether or not they're going to be able to have this or not?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're going to be able to do it, I think it's the how we do it, and I'm hoping that we'll have some answers. For some of these events, like Battle of the Houses, for example, um, with, by the end of this week, the, the prom, as I understand it, was a conversation that, um, the EOC wanted to have with the head principals were there to talk about graduation. I wasn't at that meeting, but I understand prom came up and they, they do expect to have a conversation with the EOC about prom. So, um, hopefully we can jumpstart even that, that conversation tomorrow with the Health Department. Um, so that we can go relatively quickly through EOC as well. But on some of these other issues, Ms. Jacobson, I would hope to have an answer by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay.
All right, um, I'm going to ask Mr. Papa George, a couple of questions have come up, uh, uh, related to, uh, facility rentals and use of our facilities for the summer, both field and, uh, buildings. I'm going to ask Mr. Papa George to speak to that, and also, um, it's been a while, uh, but we can't forget that we have, uh, ongoing field issues, uh, with field contamination that we should discuss. And Mr. Papa George has an update on that as well. So, Mr. Papa George?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'll start with the, uh, building rentals. So we have been moving forwards with allowing facilities to be rented on, the outside facilities should be rented, I should say. The turf fields at the, uh, at the high schools, uh, we're increasing the number of people allowed on them at this point. We are also looking at inside rentals as they come in on a, uh, case-by-case basis and evaluating. We're asking the people looking to do the rental to do a similar situation as we do to the schools for use of the buildings for a particular event. We ask them who's going to be responsible for contact tracing if the need should arise. Um, all that safety information we get from them, and then we evaluate the program and we speak directly with the people running it, and we make the decision whether to allow it or not. So we are looking forward to the new regulations and being able to allow more. The other thing we have to balance in there, though, is the ability for us to clean the buildings and keep them safe so that they're ready for school in the morning, not just the event itself that happens. So the, the short answer would be yes, we are looking at them and we are moving forwards with allowing them on a case-by-case basis. The, uh, other thing that came up was the fields, so the two sites that we have still at the schools that we're working with is the Osborne Hill, two locations, along with the McKinley, uh, soccer field area. It was determined by the town that the bids that came back were inadequate, so there's going to be more testing done on those sites to delineate, to delineate how far out they have to go. And then new bids will be collected. We, we continue to stand behind the fact that we don't want work done while students and staff are in the buildings. So the, the, uh, additional testing of the two sites will be conducted on Wednesday early mornings, allowing for that little bit of extra time now to get things done. So that is where we stand on the fields. At this point, nothing has been moved forwards for cleanup. I, we're hoping to see that done over the summer when students are not in.
Ms. Guernsey?
Hi, hi, just a quick question, uh, from Mr. Papa George, um, in terms of protocol. For the organizations that might have made reservations already through, or requests through, uh, school due for next year or next summer to, for the use of indoor facilities, would you be contacting them then? Or, or would it be, wh- what's the process for how they would receive this kind of approval?
So they, our, the woman who we have that oversees the reservations and approval of them, she, she actually contacts, she's in communication with them, and then she also reaches out to me so we can review together or go over the requests.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Papa George? Okay, seeing none. Anything else, Mr. Cummings?
One more thing, Ms. Max and Canelli had asked about, uh, the AP testing arrangements. And, um, we had, she had asked that a, a couple of meetings ago, and then last, last meeting, I, she raised it and I asked her that we talk about it tonight. So I asked Doctors Havichank to speak, um, again with the high schools, and he's got an update on, on, uh, the AP testing. Do Doctors Havichank's there if he can speak to this?
Sure, thank you, James Havichank, Executive Director of Instruction, Curriculum and Assessment. So I, um, I did work with the high school administration on the AP tests, testing earlier in the year. College Board has, uh, allowed some varying paths to take the test this year. Uh, as you know, last year it was, um, online, they had a digital platform. Were some issues with it that have been worked out, and they have gone to a new platform this year in order to allow the testing. At, at this point, um, College Board has opened up three testing windows, um, beginning early in May and running through the end of June. Um, the first window closes around the seventeenth, the second one is between the seventeenth and I think the end of May. And the third one runs the end of June, and, uh, College Board has also committed to some makeup exams if the third window was chosen for, for, for school districts. Um, within those windows, there are, uh, options, um, to take the test in different manners. So there's the traditional paper and pen test, um, that most of our students have taken. And then there's, um, a digital version, uh, that could be taken both in, uh, at home and, um, in school. Um, Administration two and three is where the digital version is. Administration one is, um, the paper and pen at this point. Um, and, and schools obviously have to commit for their students to, to take the exams for them. Um, for those who may not be aware, the College Board does set the dates for the test. So they tell you, for example, AP Statistics is being taken on Monday, May seventeenth, and I'm just making that up from twelve to four. Um, so that's where the, the commitment, um, falls with them. There are about, um, I think there's about ten. There are about, I think there's about 10 tests, all world language, as well as a number of STEM that teachers have advocated only to be given paper and pen. And Fairfield, obviously, is following those guidelines with them. When we, when I met with the high school administration on this earlier in the year, looking at spacing and looking at what it would take for proctors, as well as room, room availability within both high schools, time constraints for students and, and where they're sitting for the tests under the current conditions we were in at that point. We had decided that if a digital test was available, an at-home digital test, we would do the at-home digital test first, and then look to the paper and pen or pencil and paper test moving forward after that. Just to give some numbers on what it would look like for some of our larger tests, which would have been in school in a typical year, under the conditions we were under at that time, so I, I did ask the high school administrators to put that together. I'll just give one example, comparative government, for example, in politics, one of our AP history courses has about 73 students taking the test in one building this year. There are within that many students who require accommodations. The high school, one high school and the other would have to follow a pretty similar pattern, but just looking at one of them at this point, would need seven rooms and seven proctors just for that one test, that one day, in order to get it done. The proctors are obviously not the teachers giving the test, they're folks we, we bring in to manage it. It would have closed down, at this point, both gyms and a number of other, the larger spaces that are currently being used by some of the bigger classes in order to accommodate the testing. So, we did feel in students' best interest, in logistical best interest, that we should go with the digital test before looking at the paper and pencil tests, which, again, were the world languages and eight STEM, STEM courses at this point. So, so those are the main reasons. I'll obviously be here for questions and open up for questions as, as they come up.
Ms. Max Canelli?
Thank you, and first of all, thank you for being responsive, Mr. Cummings and Mr. Zavagencik for looking into it. I, I do have a problem with the phrase that in students' best interest. I definitely get why logistically it's a lot easier for the high schools to have these kids take it at home. There's equally no question in my mind that there are an awful lot of student interest reasons which would dictate that many students would far prefer and benefit from taking it in the building. And so, I, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not deaf to your point, but with all of those windows as opportunities, and I haven't been, you know, acquainted with the details of is each test available in each window, because if that were the case, then the kids could be spread out, and it would not be 73 kids at once, but it would be about 25 in each of those windows, and that right there solves a logistical issue. I just, with all of the logistical reasons for everything we've done educationally for what will be by the end of the school year, 15 months, I would think the student interest would far outweigh those for these tests. And that if, and again, some students may be absolutely fine, I, I don't claim to be speaking for all, for all of those students at all. But I definitely vehemently disagree that it is in the students' best interest that they be required to take an AP test from 4 to 8 o'clock at home in their house while their parents are coming home from work, their younger siblings are running around, and they're trying to focus on an AP test with technology on a brand-new platform that might fail. I, I just, that's not students' best interest, never mind that many of these tests are far, it's much easier to do pen and pencil, that the technology is not the easiest way to do this. I just, I wish that the student best interest were a bigger factor in this, and that this were reexamined for that reason.
Thank you, Mrs. Max Canelli. I don't know if anyone wants to respond to that, or just take it under advisement.
No, I, I would say, I appreciate what Ms. Max Canelli is saying. I, I think that there was, there was an effort on, on part of the high school, after reviewing this with Doctors Avagencik and the high schools, I think there was an effort to try to find the right balance. I think that this is just, I, I will say that, that people tried to do what was, they felt was going to work best for students, given the different issues they had to face. A lot of things this year, I think that ultimately, some of this, this has resulted in some, in compromises that we would not do in, in what we will hope will be a normal year.
Any other questions on this? Anything else to report, Mr. Cummings?
No, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you, I wanted, I wanted to ask Mr. Cummings something. We, we got a, we got a comment from a parent today, and the more I think about it, the more it seems like a good question to me, about the delayed opening tomorrow. Is there a reason that we selected 10:30 as the delayed opening for the elementary schools and not 10:25?
The, the published start time for the schools, the elementary schools, is 9:00 AM. That's been our, I mean, as long as I've been in Fairfield, that's been the public, the published start time for the elementary schools. I think a lot of our elementary schools open the doors five minutes early, and so people are used to an earlier time. But that, we, we base the correspondence on the document that is online, I forget the formal name of it, but essentially, we put it out every year, that documents, the start times for schools, delayed opening times, early dismissal times, and that document for, for, as I said, for at least the six years I've been here, has said 9:00 AM. For, for 10 of the schools, obviously, Holland Hills says 8:10. So, we just base it off that number.
That's fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Okay, moving on to committee liaison reports. Does anybody have a report? Mr. Tally?
SEPTA will have its next meeting on Wednesday, April 28th. The topic is making time for self-care. So, Inspire Inc. will be coming in and presenting ideas and strategies to help busy, special needs families prioritize self-care and improve overall care. So, again, that's 7:30 on April 28th, you can go to FairfieldSEPTA.org and join the Zoom.
Thank you. Mrs. Max Canelli?
Yeah, in policy, I just wanted to, again, thank Mr. Cummings for bringing together the, both high schools head principals and the principals of the middle schools, and we had a very robust discussion about the grading policy, which Fairfield does not have at present, and which we are looking to begin to tackle. I thought it was going to take us maybe half an hour, and an hour and a half later, we were, I was saying, we're done. So, it was, it was a really good conversation, very good to have all the staff members hear their points of view, have some back and forth. I apprised the board of this, because if there's anything that you would like to bring to our attention, to factor into the conversation at our next policy meeting, at the request of staff, and I, you know, we probably should have been a little bit more ready with this at the last policy meeting, but the three of us will be talking about some of our ideas that we, we would like them to consider as staff members, teachers and administrators begin to put together some recommendations, and, you know, it'd be good that we're somewhat on the same page in terms of expectations, so that if, again, if other board members have just some lingering issues, we don't need policy language, just topics of things that you think that the board should consider supporting in policy. That would be great, our next policy meeting is in a couple of weeks, and so if you give it some thought and email me, I would appreciate it.
Okay, Mrs. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson?
I almost forgot I had a committee report since we had our Finance and Budget Committee meeting, it was a day after our last board vet meeting, but we, we dealt with 95% of what we dealt with in that meeting, open choice, ESER, American Rescue Plan grants. We also talked briefly about structural change, and the plan with that is to try to get something on our board calendar, perhaps, full board calendar, perhaps in May. Before then, I need to arrange a meeting with Mike to go over some, some topics with that, so just in terms of having a broader presentation to present to the board about what we've been talking about in committee.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Jacobson, did your hand up?
Oh, hi, yeah, I just wanted to report that obviously bills at the state level are making their way through at this point. I sent Mr. Cummings and Mrs. Vitali a list of items recently that made it out of committee, so we'll see what happens with those, but just wanted to let you know that we're watching and, and I'm keeping them informed.
Thank you. Anyone else? This Board of Health meeting last night, there's supply of vaccine in Fairfield right now, so that is good news. So, spread the word, if people are looking for a vaccine right now, the Fairfield Health Department does have it. A lot of, just updates from the school, just the increased cases before break, and the challenges with contact tracing. There was a shout-out to Fairfield Public School staff for all of their work and support in helping the Department of Health do the contact tracing, and that was really, Mrs. Max Canelli?
Was there any discussion yet of setting up any type of clinic for Fairfield students?
I did ask about that. Right now, there is not a plan for that, as reported previously. The state is starting with the Alliance districts. Mr. Cleary has been asking, you know, that is, is a priority, something that we want to pursue, but he is just really following the state guidance right now and waiting for those districts to get it first. I did bring up that some, we heard some other districts are doing it, setting up clinics for their students, but it is through private entities, and he wasn't really sure how that was possible necessarily, just because the guidance seems to be pretty straightforward in terms of what districts were prioritized. The Alliance district's being first, but he did reiterate that's parents, encouraging parents to get their children vaccinated, if that's something that they're in favor of, you don't necessarily need to wait for a school-sponsored clinic for those students that are eligible. Thank you, Mrs. Max Canelli, for bringing that up. I did ask about it, also asked if there's anything that we could do to help, just to let us know, we would advocate for that, just to move it forward, to make it easier for our students to receive a vaccine. Any other comments from committee? Okay, seeing none, moving on to open board comment. Seeing none, public comment, just anyone who is still listening, who likes to give comment on agenda items, you can email us to the public comment email address, or use the form on the website. And with that, motion to adjourn? Ms. Jacobson, second by Ms. Guernsey, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.